One to the April 12th, 2022, which was the planning board. We are being recorded both on Windcam, thank you Windcam and via Zoom. If you don't want to appear on the recording, please turn off your video and your sound. You can always reach the planning board by emailing us at planningboard@winters.us. And that goes to all of us and also goes to all of us, which includes the town planner. We have with us tonight as well Nancy Pocari, our recording secretary. And Brian Manter, Assistant Town Engineer, who will be weighing in on some of the ZBA petitions. Very quickly, we have two ZBA positions coming up at 7:15. We are an advisory board for those. So we will pass our recommendations on to the ZBA. Then we will be talking about the Planning Board Report for Springtown Meeting. We will be discussing the warrant articles that are going before town meeting. To see whether or not the board, the planning board wants to weigh in with an endorsement or a non endorsement, or whatever that's called. We will be having a discussion of the NBA communities zoning. At 8:35 and that's in preparation for a presentation to the select board tomorrow evening. And then we will be going, we will approve some minutes and I'm going to suggest that we switch the executive session minute approval with a non executive session. Minute approval so that we can just go into executive session and adjourn the meeting at once. So first off. Updates, Brian, do you have any updates you'd like to share this evening?
I'm sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call. Thank you. Yeah, we do have to do a roll call. And since each has started us off, eaching Scott. Who's next? Kurt Spring.
Present.
It's like now I've moved, I've lost everyone. Sally Tale.
Present.
Nick Rosatos.
Present.
And one, two, three, four. Did I get everyone? I'm confused.
Yourself.
Yourself.
It was myself. Yes, thank you. Present. Dear Jerry is present. I apologize. I keep looking at my screen. And I think I've turned off my own monitor, my own vision of myself. So, okay. So now let's move to open updates, Brian, please.
Yeah, so first I guess I'll start off on the. Their tool design is doing their first listening session on Thursday, May 19th for the townwide bike ped transportation. Plan. So this was an appropriation from town meeting last town meeting. Sorry. And so the first listening session, like I said, it just got decided today. And we're going to be part of that survey. Sorry, part of that process is going to be a survey. As you enter on a map, certain transportation related issues that you have in town. So it has all, it's going to be an interactive. Point on a, on a map that you'll say this intersection is dangerous or for these reasons. And there's going to be dialogue boxes. It's going to be a whole interface of, on that's map based. That's going to be a lot of, or not a lot, but that's going to be a portion of the public participation in order to get. Some data on what are the issues related to bike ped and, and auto. Trips. So again, that's just to put on your calendars, May 19th at 7:00 PM. And I'm not exactly sure the details other than, other than that in terms of. But there will be a fly, there's going to be a flyer created that's going to be ready for town meeting, which is on the 25th. So they'll, we'll be able to get that advertisement out to everyone in order to go to this website. In order to start the process. But so that's, that's kind of one update. During this time also, we, we have to have a very small discussion on the planning board leftover funds as well. The between now and 7:15. So DAB, I didn't know how much. We wanted to do the, that conversation first in order to get there before 7:15 or not.
I just, before I continue, there's, there's someone that has some sort of a scraping noise coming across their microphone. So I don't know.
It would have to be me. They're the only person talking. Okay. So is that, is everyone experiencing that? When error, yes, it is. Okay. So I can try a different headset and maybe during that time. If you want to talk about the M pick and I can go get some headphones.
Yeah, I had some quick. Updates. So first off, it affects the board is the select board voted last night to take, to put out the town council's bid. Town council contract up for bid. Their current contract ends at the end of this fiscal year. And I know that we have a project that we're starting to work with on town council to review some of our zoning. I don't know if we're going to get that done by the end of June 31st. I assume they're going to be wanting to finish up a number of things just in case they do not. Win the new contract. So that's an effect that's, that'll affect us. If also, if you didn't get a chance to watch the select board meeting last night. They had a really great discussion on some of the downtown traffic improvements. Narrowing Main Street, putting in extended sidewalks, some really exciting ideas about redoing. The pedestrian and walking experience. So the packet they, that you can get if you go to the town, to the website, you look at the agenda. For last night's select board meeting, there's a packet which has all the visuals. So you can take a look at that. That was really exciting. As Brian mentioned, we last, well, we have now gotten out all of the. Invitations to boards and committees and for our selection committees for the master plan implementation committee. And Sally has reached out to the high school and we will be hosting. Position descriptions by the end of this week, I hope. So we were looking for appointment of the committee in the next couple of months with the first. Meeting hopefully in June. I've already gotten some pushback from, not pushback, some comments. From some of the other boards saying they weren't sure if they were supposed to be representatives on the M pick itself or on the selection committee. So despite our best efforts of trying to. Clarify that language. I guess I didn't do well enough. So that's just the, the idea is that we are going to have a, a nine member, 10 member board, eight of whom are selected by other committees. And we want to create selection committees and we are asking the other committees to provide representatives for the selection committee. So it's a two step process. Anyway, the other thing Brian mentioned is that we do have some leftover funds from the master plan. Project we had as, and I'll just read from his, his, his notes here, planning board received two dispersments of funds from town meeting. One to prepare a master plan, the other to finalize the plan. We have a leftover of about 19,78646. And we need to return that to the town because we cannot use that based upon the language with which we were given the funds. So we will need to vote to return that to the town. And so. If someone would make a motion to return. Do we need to actually put in the, the fund numbers on this, Brian, or simply just vote to return the funds 19,78646?
First of all, is this better with this headset or is this still an issue?
The noise is gone, but you, you were definitely in a can. You're, you sound much further away, but that's okay.
I can hear you though.
Okay, maybe I will speak louder. I would say to, to the 19,786 to return it to the town and then really here it's that last sentence in order to be used for capital projects.
Okay. Do we actually have a say in that?
It was asked if we could do that. But it, otherwise it just goes to the general fund. This, this, this goes the now towards the, if we have the ability to put it back to the general fund, I believe. Or we, it can be used for capital projects. Those were the two. So I thought it made, it made sense in general to just put more money in, into capital projects.
I would, I would concur with that. Any, any comments from the board?
No.
Sounds fine.
Okay, so. I guess the motion would be to return 19,786 dollars and 46 cents. Back to the town in order to be used for capital projects that are in line with the master plan. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
And second.
Oh, there's a quick second. Okay, roll call vote, please. Nick.
I.
Eaching.
I.
Sally.
I.
Kurt.
I.
And DAB says I as well. So that's five zero. Thank you all very much. And so we have three minutes. Is there anything, any updates from anyone else?
I wonder if it'd be helpful at some point, if not today, to have Brian, DAB, to have Brian update us on. To the extent that people have come into the planning board office and have had requests or questions. I'd like to have the opportunity to be kind of proactive and responsive. And I mean, from time to time, if developers come in and say, oh, they like this, that, or the other thing. I think it would be helpful for the planning board to have an idea what, what they want. So that when we kind of think and formulate ideas. We can kind of be also proactive and responsive to some of these. Desires as well. So I, and I don't know whether we have the time now, but it'd be nice to have Brian report on conversations or. When people have stopped into our office to, to inquire or to ask about feasibility of certain. Building or project or just that or the other thing. Do you have a wondering if that might be something that we could do either now or in the future?
I know that one of the things that we, we were talking about and that the board has to get its brain around is. Essentially a log of Brian's interactions with constituents and developers. So that's one of the things that we had talked about. In a more formal sense, I, Brian. We've got a minute. Anything you want to, you could just drop something off right now if you.
Yeah, the only, the only developer that I have met with in the past long while has requested to be on the planning board agenda for May 10th. And this is 910 Main Street. This is the Sakura building. It's a historic building. There was demo delay on it. The year has been up, but whatever they. Would do there requires at least site plan review at minimum. And they would like to be in front of the planning board to kind of determine a course of action on, on that property. In full disclosure, I told him based upon a letter that the planning board had given in 2020, that they would like to see the incorporation. Of any new, any new addition to be, sorry, to be an incorporation into that building for that building to remain. So. That's what I told them because that's generally what the feeling of the board was then. There's obviously a new board now. So he wants to come back in, in front of the board to see, because it's a new board. So, but that's the only, I wouldn't even say that's the only thing of note. I'm saying that would be the only developer that I have talked with. And like I said, they are planning on trying to come to the board on the May, I want to say May 10th, if that time works out.
Great. Tell me the name. That would be great. That would be, that'd be helpful to, to have his.
Of course. Yes. So he's not, yeah, he has had a purchase and sale on this, on this property does, is not the current, is not the owner. But his name is Anthony Marino. He has been before the board. Twice regarding this property.
Great.
Okay, it is now 716. So let us open up our hearings. We have two permit hearings. They're not actually not hearings. Technically they are not hearings. We have petition 3958, lot for Abbey Road. Brian, you want to lead us off on that?
Can I make my point of order?
Yes, please go ahead.
All right. So I, I'd like to recuse myself from the Abbey Road ZBA petition tonight. I have no financial interest in it or really conflict of interest, but the only thing is that I am. Just classmates and friends with the, the architect and I, even though we're advisory. Position, I just don't want to have any perception of conflict of interest. So.
Okay, thank you. So I think in order to meet. The easiest thing to do is eaching is if you could actually put yourself in the waiting room or Brian, if you could put eaching in the waiting room. And then we'll bring you back when that's done. By eaching, okay. So.
Sure. Sorry about that. So this, the petitioners are seeking a dimensional variance. In order to be permitted to construct a new single family dwelling, they'll be located closer to the front property line than permitted as of right. This is part of the requirement of the development agreement under, this is one of the five lots of the Abbey Road development. The petitioners are also seeking site plan review under 951 so as to change the grade of more than 500 square feet by more than 6%. Properties located in the RDB, which is the 10,000 square foot district and it contains nearly 16,000 square feet. The historical commission unanimously voted. No adverse effect on any historical resource. Design review committee recommended favorable action, but at the time of the memo, I did not receive the draft or finalized minutes from them. So again, this is the creation of a new house. As a result of subdivision application and a development agreement with the select board. A condition of the development agreement was the applicant had to apply to ZBA for front setback variance in order to place the house as far away from the abutters as possible. At this time, the planning board had received favorable recommendations from the current abutters outside of two, two abutters, which are the two current. The two owners are, one is, I think, believes still five points development under Craig Miller and the other butter, Steve Myel, who's the developer of lots one, two, and three. So those are the two owners that we have not heard from in writing, but we've heard from all the other abutters. And then they all recommended favorable, favorably upon the petition. Due to the placement of the house and the associated landscaping. Very important here that variance applications may only be approved due to the nature of the existing lot. And to the extent that the shape, topography or soils of the lot are somehow different than the prevailing lots in the neighborhood. And this particular lot is impacted by a hammerhead and associated lack of space towards the front of a lot due to it. And the orientation, the proposed building maximizes the sightlines from the abutters into the fels and achieves the desired condition from the development agreement, in my opinion. I recommended favorable action with regards to the variance application as a proposed solution to push the house closer to the hammer than, than allowed by zoning is in the best interest of the neighborhood and the direct abutters. I also believe that the applicant has made reasonably adequate provisions to meet site plan review standards in 957. There are some ongoing potential storm water issues that I would defer to the assistant engineer who's here, Brian Manter. So after I'm done, I would hand it over to him for a minute. But it, there's call for oversight, more oversight over the stormwater of this project. That can be done in two different ways. One could be done as a recommendation to the ZBA. This evening, you know, this evening to potentially have an outside consultant such as VHB to basically check these as built. Or it could be done under opening, reopening the subdivision. So with that, I'll give it to Brian to just discuss a little bit about the stormwater.
So good evening. Good evening, everyone. This is Brian Mezger, Assistant Town Engineer. Currently, the engineering department is still under review of the lot for application for the ZBA. However, you know, on a high level. The applicant has provided additional infiltration systems to offset. The increases of impervious cover on their lots. They would be capturing flows from their, the building and the new patio. The design seems to be in accordance with the standards of the set forth by the town using the design storms. Has laid out the stormwater regulations, you know, with setbacks with from the property line and foundation. So on a very high level, the applicant appears to have provided a concept and design that's in accordance with town standards. With respect to the as-built drawings, the, the town has received as-built from the developer of Abbey Road. However, it's come to the town's attention that there may be some. Further detail that needs to be fleshed out on those as-built drawings and we're in the process of understanding what, what that looks like. And that's important because the, the system that lot four proposes may have ties to the existing system that's in the subdivision at this time. So as Brian, as Brian had mentioned, there are many avenues to try to further understand what the existing conditions are out there through this. Through the as-built. But one of the ways would be to hire a third party consultant to verify the, the work out there.
Okay, thank you. I would just like to ask, there's, there's a person in the public who's attending called John. If you wouldn't mind putting your last name into your screen name so that our recording secretary could get your full name for our minutes. I'd appreciate that. So at this point, I'd like to open it up to the board to, if you have any comments or questions. I do believe we do have. The homeowner here. And do we have any, anyone else from, for that project? If you could just raise your hand, if you are. Here and you're interested in speaking, we'll get an idea of who would like to speak. Okay, we have a Joey Davis who'd like to speak. And.
Do you have just to be clear, Joey Davis is the applicant along with Jessica Chang. So it's, but, but there are other, there are others that may want to speak.
Yeah, I just would like to have an idea of, oh, and I'm, I don't want to speak yet. Here, I'll turn mine off. I just want to have an idea of how many people would like to speak so we can, we can allot time appropriately. And so I have one person who'd like to speak. Anyone else? Two people? So it looks like two people would like to speak on this. Okay. So before we get to the public, why don't we go around the board? I'll just go around and you can tell me whether you have any questions. Sally?
I think one question I have is, why the other two abutters have not responded and it may just be a simple question, simple answer of. They just didn't have a chance. But it makes me wonder if they are for some reason not in favor of this petition and I would wonder why.
Okay.
Yeah, well.
Okay. Do we have, are any of those two people here tonight?
No, they are not.
Okay. So I guess we will. Just, we can't make an assumption as to why unfortunately. Yep. Was that, was that your? Anything else?
I guess the, the other question that is on the table is what about the storm drainage system for the entire subdivision? Appears in some way to. The as-built drawings don't document what's actually there. And my right that the as-built drawings also do not document what was the original engineering stormwater management plan. So I mean, it's a really big topic, but I just want to make sure that's on the table for discussion. Thank you.
I think that's actually a question that we can ask of Brian in that. You, we did get as-built plans as close for when we closed out the subdivision, correct?
Correct. Yes. And those plans do show the systems that, that developer was to install as part of the agreement. However, there are some details that have come up in this, in the, you know, in review of the as-built drawings that. Show that there may be further information required from the, the developer, the designer of the, the drawer of the, I'm sorry, the engineer who developed the plans. So it's a matter of, at this stage, in my opinion, just clarification as to what these observations are. And to, you know, to correct them if needed, or maybe they're just omissions. But at this time, it's not clear what the nature or why those, you know, observe, you know, what those, the nature of those observations, like what they came from. Whether it was an omission or a CAD drafting error or something changed in the field during construction that wasn't necessarily communicated. You know, so there was a reason why that's not shown, you know, something's not shown, but we just don't understand the nature of, nature of that. So. So I, I don't think it's a question of the systems out there at this stage. I don't think it's a question of the systems that are out there that were built are inadequate. I think it's just a more of a question of the, the, the as-built drawings have been provided to the town may not be as accurate to the field conditions as, as they could be.
Right. So I have, can I have two follow-up questions, DAB?
Uh, yeah, we are, we are just to remind everyone that we.
We're over time.
We're over time. We only get 15 minutes and we promised eaching that we would keep, we'd be very efficient at zoning board reviews. Okay. So why don't, hold on to your question.
Yeah, I can wait.
And let's see, Nick, you were, you were going to say something earlier.
I don't have anything along those lines at the moment.
Okay. So you have, you can say anything you want right now. So just your.
I think it looks like an exciting project. I, I don't have anything to, to add at this point.
Okay, Kurt?
Yeah, real quick. So Brian, just to clarify, it sounds like there's an inconsistency possibly between the as-built drawings and what's actually in place. Unclear whether or not it's material or not. Can you just clarify, what is your, or what is the town's recommendation, if any, to the planning board for taking action here? Is there a recommendation there? Or is there something where we're being expected or recommended that we do here?
Yeah, Kurt, that's a great question. Ultimately, the town deserves to have accurate, as accurate record drawings as possible. However, that, however, we get that is, you know, I think needs to be further discussed. Further discussed, but this time it seems like what's been observed could be, you know, could be an issue of like a CAD drafting error. Or maybe just a, an oversight or omission. So we just need to get to the bottom of what these observations are and then try to rectify that.
Who's, who's the responsible party? I assume it's the original developer who's responsible for doing that. If that's the case, does reopening the subdivision somehow hold them accountable for making sure they're, they're solving this problem, not the town?
Yeah, I can, I might be more equipped to answer that than, than Brian. So basically the, the two options in this would be legal counsel essentially saying what to do. It's the, the two options are either that we would reopen the subdivision, make the applicant through an outside consultant 53G like. You know, essentially make that the applicant of the subdivision that was responsible for doing that. Make them pay for VHB to go out there and test or, and, and. Make sure that the added build drawings are. To, are, are accurate. That's one way through a sub for opening the subdivision. The other potential legal way is through this zoning board process, which could be, you know, much quicker and easier. I don't know what legal counsel would do nor would I speak for them. But those are the two possibilities.
What, what, I'm sorry, what is the difference that we understand between the as-built drawings and what's happening?
Yeah, Nick, that's a good question. So right, as of right now, it's been observed that the, one of the outlet pipes, one of the main system. Infiltration systems, these are like, I would call them the common or the pub, not public, but the, the systems for the subdivision. Is missing a pipe connection from that, the outlet structure of that underground system. The outlet structure of that underground system to the drain manhole, which in turn ties into the public. Drain, you know, to the drain line or the storm sewer collection system. Um, so that, that, so it's just, so it's a line that's not shown on the record drawing that was shown on the proposed drawing. And the engineering staff department has gone out and verified that that pipe does appear to exist in the field. Like we opened the manhole and saw that connection coming into the manhole, but it's not shown on the drawing, so we're trying to work with the. The engineer who drew the drawings to determine like what, what could have happened, it could have been some boat, something, something as simple as just. A CAD layer was accidentally not turned on or something.
So it's, it's nothing that you can see, you, 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 it's, it's not an aesthetic thing, it's not a placement of the building. Are we gonna, uh, I mean, is the correct pipe gonna go in at the end of the day and, and if so? What, I mean, what is the, is there any impact um at the end of the day regarding this pipe issue?
Um, the, the impact would be just having accurate records of what's.
Okay.
What's in the field now.
To do that, I mean, I guess the.
Sorry, the pipe is in there.
Yeah, the pipe is there.
Yeah, it's the drawings that are the issue.
Okay, so, so it's, it, it's in there, it's proper, it's gonna function the way it's supposed to, and we just need to get a drawing that. That agrees so we can have the records updated.
We believe so, yes, so the pipes there, now a little caveat to is that elevations are important, so we need to make sure that the elevate, you know, they show the elevation. So you know that the pipes got the right pitch and everything like that, so that requires some measurements. So at the end of the day, we believe the pipe is there, we've seen that the evidence of it coming into the manhole is coming in from the right direction where the system, where it be coming from. So it looks like it's there and that everything's looking to be pointing in the direction that it's probably just some cat CAD mistake. Um, the other, the other item was that there was um. A pipe shown on the drawings, on the record drawings, that does not seem to connect into the same manhole. So it's just maybe that they, they type for whatever reason during construction, they weren't able to tie in the manhole and they had to tie it into another pipe, like. These things tend to pop up in construction, um, and we just need to get clarification to understand. What, what's going on here, um, so maybe it's as simple as some good explanation and photos and documents. Um, by the, the engineer of record, um, so you know, that's what we're trying to work on right now.
So, so, thank you, Brian, I, I see two things the board has to determine, one is, um, we, we obviously have an issue with the. With whether or not we reopen the subdivision, the other is, are there, um? What is our, so taking that and setting that aside just for the moment, not permanently, just for the moment. Are there any concerns about um anything else on this project?
Yeah, so do you have, I, I know I jumped right to the, the storm water, but no, I, I agree with Nick, I thought the project looked exciting, I thought. It made a lot of sense given the shape of the lot, the changes that were proposed and the, the fact that all the butters are enthusiastically supportive of, of the plans. I mean, I, I see no reason not to, to, to move forward with it.
Okay, um, Sally, did you have a concern about something other than the drainage?
Um, no, I want to say that I agree with Nick and Kurt that. Um, I personally think the design of the house is beautiful and that the work that you've done. To uh make sure you're fully in compliance with zoning code and um meeting the needs of the neighbors is commendable.
Um, okay, so uh I agree with the, with the um statements about the design and such, where I think we are really coming down to. Does the board want to, um, how do we want to engage on the stormwater? Um, so Brian, with an I, you suggested two ways forward, but I didn't understand. The difference, so there's one where we would reopen the subdivision. And. I would want to make sure that if we were to reopen it, we would reopen it just for this issue so that reopening didn't bring in. Any other concerns, because that's not something the board wants to deal with, but then you also said there was a way of going forward to the Z B A which would be quicker. And that's the, that, how does, what is that?
Now, actually, thinking about that, I can regretfully say that I misspoke. Uh, that, because this would not be, if this would not be this, uh, lot four applicant, this would not be. Um, Joey and Jess, uh, this is the, um, you know, this would be five, five points to the. Uh, the five points development, so I wanna retract my Z B A. Uh, quick fix that is impossible, so that's easy to, to, to retract, right? So. Yeah, I, I don't think it would make sense for, uh, it, it, it is not lot fours issue that uh, uh, of a. Um, something that was in the, the planning board decision, which has to do with providing accurate as-bills. So I would say that in order to fix that, it would have to be, uh, barring legals, you know. Okay, I would, I, I, I think that the only way po- move, possible moving forward is uh to fix that problem would be to open up subdivision. If, if, if they're not gonna, if they're not just gonna do it, we don't, I mean, they could just do it also, uh, but, but the problem is is that we need to verify it. And that's where, that's where the outside consulting. Because it's not gonna be the engineering department, it's gonna be out there, that's not their job. To verify as-bills, a professional engineer is stamping a set of plans. Uh, the, um, so, yeah, I don't know if you want any more questions about.
As a peer reviewer, right, they're doing a peer review of the plans comparing it to the actual construction underground, right?
Correct.
Right.
So, so I think this, so this is, um, so the storm, the issues with the as-bills. From my understanding, do not impact the ability of this project to go forward?
Well, that's my question.
Yeah, and so. Uh, maybe. We could have the uh, the proponents saying something about that very quickly. Because we're already twenty minutes over on our, our Z B A allotment this evening, so. Uh, Joey Davis, you, you have unmuted, so why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, happy to speak about it, so, I mean, I, I think, um, the way that we're supposed to calculate stormwater is. We need to um provide tanks to cover whatever excess um relative to what was on the subdivision plans. And so we've done that for our excess and the question is whether or not. The um original system covers what was on the subdivision plants. So, you know, if it doesn't, then we can build a bigger tank to take care of it, or we can try to reroute things, it's a little bit hard to know exactly what to do. But to Brian Manter's point earlier, this may be as simple as a CAD layer and I would hate to see. The whole project sort of, I, you know, I just don't know what the timeline is for the things that you guys are discussing, I don't know what it means to reopen subdivision, I don't know what it means to. To do these things, so. Um, I would like to get to the bottom of it ideally before our Z B A meeting and I assure you I'm doing everything in my power to. Convince Craig Miller to go out there and tell me what's going on, but I thus far have been unsuccessful.
Um, yeah, so I, I, this is definitely something that the onus should not be upon you to do that, um. In order to, I don't think redoing your system. Um, the, the system that was put in as part of the subdivision should be capable of um accommodating what it was planned to do, so. Um, I don't think the onus should be on you to put in extra if it's failing, uh, Sally, really quickly?
Yeah, the question that I had earlier was, is this um inconsistency? Um, there's two inconsistencies between the as-built and the drawings, in one case, there's a pipe that's documented but not there. And in another case, there's a pipe that's um not documented but is there, and so that's interesting, but regardless of that. Is any of that potentially related to the previous runoff issue that was brought before this board? That had to do with runoff from the property um impacting the house on the corner of what I believe is Dana. And, and, and Highland, um, uh, Mr. S- Scarf's house, if I'm not mistaken. And I see he's here, and I just want to know if it's all part of the same um potential problem. Um, I know that people went out and looked at the rain runoff in a really heavy storm, Brian, I believe you, Brian with a Y, I think, did that. And we sort of put that issue to rest, but I'm wondering if it should not be at rest, that's my question.
If it would be helpful, I can just share a screen and show you the, where we're talking about and then where these other houses are, I'm happy to do that if that's useful.
I, I'm trying to um keep this on track here and just trying to understand what is really pertinent to. Moving you forward on your project.
Yeah.
So I think the, the issues with resolving the disparities in the as-bills. Maybe, I mean, Sally, perhaps that is, that is related, but for this project, um, I, I think the. If we need to open the subdivisions in order to account to, to get this done, then I think the planning board should be willing to do so. Um, I think what I um don't know is whether we can open it just for this issue. Or whether this, um, how we handle that sort of thing, and that's something that legal will have to advise us. Can someone tell me when this is supposed to go before, oh, it's right here?
The twenty-first?
The twenty-first, so that's uh, that's in a week, so there's not an awful lot of time. I think that's in a week if I add, right, yeah, so we will not have a planning board meeting prior to that. To have a discussion as to whether we should open the subdivision or not. How does a board want to go forward on this, do we, I, I think a little extra pressure trying to get those, those, these as-bills corrected. Might be useful.
I think that we should um say something to the effect that. Um, we're concerned that as-bills and, and as-built documents. And the as-built installation are not matching, that's just a basic concern and that given that. Um, we would not at all be opposed to asking for a fifty-three con- G consultant. That would be paid for by the original subdivision developer. Um, to just go out and verify what the discrepancies are between the drawings and what's underground. Um, and, um. Uh, perhaps answer my question too, is if, i- i- if it's further related to the previous concerns about runoff. Um, with the development, um, and so, and until that question is answered by the fifty-three G consultant. Um, that we um don't have a recommendation for the zoning board of appeals. On the um drainage issues, but we do have a recommendation for the zoning board of appeals. On the general plan for the development of lot four, could we say something like that?
I, I think part, I think, um, we. Because the original developer is not before the Z B A, I don't know that the Z B A can require them. To do a fifty-three.
They can't, they, they can't.
Yeah, so.
Cannot.
So we, we are the only party that can require that through reopening of the subdivision.
So the impact of that on, on the applicant is um time delay, is that correct?
Well, I think it's, yes, so either Craig Miller comes up with the, uh, with the fixes on his own. Or five points, I should say, my apologies, only other five points comes up with the fixes on its own, or we open up the subdivision. So I think at this point, those are the only two options to get the as-bills correct.
Can we get something from legal between now and the, uh, what'd you say, the twenty-first? That can be communicated to us and we can deliberate without violation of open meeting laws before the twenty-first?
We would have to schedule another meeting next week in order to handle this. We, we would have to have another me- a meeting so that we could then go forward with opening up the subdivision.
And it would be short.
Yeah, I, I, I think how you could, how you could get around this is by saying as proposed, meaning that you have, assuming that the drainage is worked out. That, that's how you could craft a, a, a motion, saying the drainage is not worked out yet, that's. As a condition, and it's a, the drainage has not worked out. Barring that, what does, what is the board's vote, and I think that could help the Z B A. If we need to open up the subdivision later to get five pa- points to do that, that's unrelated. To this petition at the moment, meaning so, i- if, so, that, 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 that's what I'm thinking, I'm thinking. Ju- ju- just that is that number one, we cannot ask the Z B A to do fifty-three G to make this applicant. Pay for this work, this is work that is done, supposed to be done by five points. So the way it works is it would say, like I said, uh, uh, a reasonable motion would be. Whatever the board thinks in terms of whether it, they favorable or unfavorable action on the entirety of it. Minus the drainage as that's clearly not worked out yet, so that's at least a lot of information to the Z B A. That they can work with, if that, you know, so that's, I would suggest making a motion, whatever that is, to kind of take the drainage out. And then what would you do if that's all good, and if it's not all good, you know, it's obviously, you know, the drainage clearly needs to be worked out, so.
So, so let me, let me, uh, so I, I think we're all in agreement on everything. Well, well, in agreement on everything so far, it's just that, uh, the first part is, uh, the motion would be that we would. Uh, we would recommend favorable action. Action on three nine five eight. Um, with the understanding. That. The stormwater drainage. Um, system. Is still, how do we want to call it, under review? Under review. And then, if we vote on that, then I would recommend that after that, this board. Also, uh, we don't need to vote on it, but we ask legal to give us an opinion on whether we can open up. The subdivisions to deal with just the issue of the as-bills. And that we bring that up before this board on the twenty-sixth, which I believe is our next meeting.
And also, we would need to do site plan review at that meeting because that's the other part of the petition.
Uh, well, we can't, we can't do it at that meeting, that's after Z B A, so what we're asked for this evening is to make a, a recommendation. Based upon a variance and site plan review, there are two portions that are being, uh. Uh, applied for, and that's what the Z B A is looking for, is one, a vote about the variance. Related to soil topographies or shape of the lot. And one about site plan review making reasonably out of, with provisions for, well, the site plan review criteria. So those are the two votes that Z B A would love to get from the board.
So the first one, I believe, goes towards site plan review. And then. The, then we can vote on that and then we could make a motion to um recommend favorable action on the variance. Um, in order to improve, so. And then we can come up with the language for that right now, so it would be favorable action, recommend favorable action on the variance. As, uh, what is the, the condition of the lot, what is the, the magic word, Brian?
It has to be on, uh, shape, topography or um soils.
Shape, or we can just say the shape and topography of the law.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's not particularly the soils, but I think. Pretty good, actually.
Uh, differs significantly. From the neighboring lots. And the alignment. Of the structure. Provides um improved sightlines. And buffering to the neighbors. Does that cover that one?
And that was your, that was your statement of our view of site plan review?
No, that was, last one was for the variance.
Oh, for the variance, okay.
The first one was simply to say we recommend favorable action, uh.
Endorsement of the site plan is what it is.
Yeah, is it, oh yeah, you're right, correct, it would be endorse, recommend endorsement of the site plan.
Or we endorse, yeah. And then. Then for the variance, you're saying that we would say the granting our recommendation to um. Grant the variance is conditioned on this um third-party review. Of what was installed underground and what, how, and how it's properly documented?
Um, well, we wouldn't put it on the condition, we can't condition it, I mean, that's, that. So the site plan review, um. Doesn't actually have anything to do with the drainage.
Are we sure, I did you have that right?
It's just, I mean, the site plan is where they're coming before site time because of a changing grade.
Okay, right, yes.
So the fact that, the fact that we are here discussing stormwater is primarily because. There's an issue with the, because it's under subdivision control.
Right, and we control subdivisions.
And we control subdivisions, so.
So it's really important that it was brought to our attention that there is a discrepancy between the. Way it was actually built and the drawings that document how it was built.
So, so. So so let us, so again, so let me, let me try um say that the first motion would say we recommend endorsement of the site plan on on uh of petition three nine five eight with the understanding that the stormwater drainage system is still under review and we're just throwing it in there so they know we know what's going on. And so if someone would make a motion for that.
I would move that the um planning board recommends favorable action um on the site plan for Four Abbey Road.
Recommend endorsement of the site plan.
But and excuse me, recommend endorsement of the site plan for Four Abbey Road with the understanding that the stormwater and drainage system for the site um is, we can't determine it with the understanding that we cannot determine if the drainage for the stormwater um uh or the design of the stormwater and drainage system for the site is um adequate until the engineering department um reviews uh um further information about discrepancies.
So we could just say still under review.
Oh, okay.
Because that would, that that kind of says it, so.
I just want to make clear that it's Lot four and not Four Abbey Road, which actually is a legitimate different address, so Lot four.
So we could just call it petition three nine five eight and not have any fours in there whatsoever. So let me try again. A motion to recommend endorsement of the site plan for Z B A petition three nine five eight with the understanding that stormwater drainage is still under review. And if someone just says so moved, that would be.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
And roll call vote, please. Uh, Nick?
Hi.
Sally?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
The Ebs says I as well. Now we go on to the second one, which is that the planning board, the most, would someone please move? Uh, that the planning board recommends favorable action on a variance as requested in petition three nine five eight um as the shape and topography of the lot differ significantly from neighboring lots and the alignment of the structure provides improved sightlines and buffering to the neighbors.
So moved.
Second.
I I said, I seconded it.
Thank you. Uh, roll call vote, Kurt?
Hi.
Nick?
Hi.
Sally?
Hi.
The Ebs says I as well. And then um we will request town council to give us uh some understanding of how we can narrowly open up subdivision to accommodate the request to um get the as built to reflect reality. And we will have that, we will have another discussion uh on our, at our next meeting, and hopefully, um if you can um whoever is speaking with five points, let them know that the planning board is considering reopening subdivision in order to ensure that we get proper as built because those are required under our subdivision control. So, thank you very much. I appreciate if other people wanted to talk about this, but we have gone on for this for, wow, forty five minutes, that's impressive. So anyway. Appreciate it. Thank you much for your time. Uh, let's move.
Good luck.
If you could uh bring uh Yeching back, and we have to apologize to her, we've broken the Yeching rule. Hey, Ching.
Everyone.
Uh, so so I just recalling it the Yeching rule now, which is get done with Z B A petitions quickly, and we've already messed up. Okay, so uh petition number three nine five eight, please. No, three five nine, three nine five nine, Brian, please leave that off.
Um, sure. So uh, this is three nine five nine nineteen Agawam Road. Petitioners are seeking a special permit uh to be permitted to construct an in-ground swimming pool that'll be located closer to the rear property line than permitted as of right. Um, this entails the installation of a new swimming pool that will encroach on the rear setback. There's a bend in the rear lot line near the location of the proposed pool, which is the reason why a special permit is necessary. Um uncovered exterior pools um are actually are considered open area uh under our zoning bylaw. However, it's unclear from the documents what the actual hardscape calculation would be for the areas that are not covered by the pool, the decks and the patios, for example. So the land use summary for existing and proposed show an impervious percentage of close to fifty percent where the existing is shown around twenty five. And then the site plan shows sixteen, so it's just like it's unclear how the applicant determines some of the percentages or why the impervious spaces appear to go up on table one, but another goes down on the site plan. There's just some inconsistencies. But I said regardless of these discrepancies that need to be fixed prior to any petition being granted. I didn't see how the proposed pool setback approach would negatively affect the neighbors or the neighborhood. And I did recommend favorable action with regards to the petition once all of the open area hardscape greenscape calculations have been determined with more accuracy. Uh, but I did recommend favorable action.
Uh, thanks. Uh, town engineer, Brian, do you have any comments on this one?
Yes, thank you. Um, so this project is um you know, they're requesting a special permit for the pool installation, and the pool itself has um believe it or not, pools are considered impervious surface um from a hydraulic standpoint. If they were pervious, they would not hold any water. Um, but the uh but you also have the patio around it, so the the pool in the per- the patio around it does increase by more than five hundred square feet. However, the applicant um has also successfully obtained a building permit. And in that building permit, they have a um an infiltration system design. So I'm working with the zoning enforcement officer to understand the marriage between what the building permit has um and with relationship to the um the impervious surface and the pool that they they're proposing. Um, so it's, it's more of um however, I say this, from a technical standpoint, I think they're on the right track. Um, but from a a permitting standpoint and understand what the zoning enforcement officer would how they would want to approach, understand this project, I I need to further further carry those conversations.
Okay, thank you. So um are there any concerns uh that the board has that like to raise right now? Keeping in mind that we're a half hour behind. And I believe the board has, oh, Sally.
No, I have no concerns. I thought we could just say that.
Okay, excellent. And uh if no one else has any concerns.
That's fine.
Okay.
Same.
So um Yeching?
Um, no comment.
So um I have none either. My only concern, of course, is that the uh stormwater gets dealt with correctly, and I think that's in hand. Yep, so um I think that uh I would welcome a motion that the planning board recommend favorable action on petition three nine five nine nineteen Agawam Road.
Do you have, do we need to make it subject to, you know, correcting the like the like what Brian, the language Brian had in his memo about, you know, subject to the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, you're right, subject to, okay, so I'm gonna write this down, so recommend favorable action. On three nine five nine subject to correction of hardscape.
Green greenscape and open space.
Hardscape, yeah, greenscape.
And open areas.
All three, hardscape, green space and open areas?
They're all, they're they're all related, so it is all, it is all three, yeah.
Okay. Um, and then I, could we just add with the understanding that, no, we don't have to say anything about the infiltration systems, because engineering is on that.
Subject to, subject to correction of discrepancies or or what are we correcting?
We're just correcting the calculations, so subject to correction of hardscape, greenscape and open area calculations. So let's take it from the top.
Yep.
Planning board recommends favorable action on petition number three nine five nine nineteen Agawam Road subject to correction of hardscape, greenscape and open area calculations.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, roll call though, Sally?
Hi.
Nick?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
Yeching?
Hi.
The Ebs says I as well, and I almost got a tic tac toe on my screen that time, so. It's sort of like watching Hollywood Squares um. On to, uh, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Project.
Thanks.
Why don't we dive right in? So we are now a half hour behind. I think warrant articles will go very quickly. So I don't think we have to worry too much about time, so let's jump into the planning board report um. Brian, if you could pop that up.
Oh, yeah, I do not, I do not have, I do not have anything related to the planning board report.
Do you, do you at least, do you have it available to pop up, or you can?
No, I'm saying they didn't get into the packet, correct?
They did not get into the.
Right, so that's why, so that's when I said I didn't have it, I mean, just at the moment, so.
And I am sorry, I should have prepped you on that, I should have. But I I have them handy if you need, if you want to give me uh.
Uh, almost there. Okay, here, I got him. Just a second.
Now I can't find my zoom window, there it is. Okay, um big green draft, apparently I don't have a choice, so. Um, the first part is uh pretty much our standard boilerplate.
I had an idea of 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 a person that or committee that we um should thank that you failed to mention.
Oh, who?
It it's the Climate Action Advisory Committee partnering with us on one of our major.
Oh, you know, you are so right. I don't know how I missed that, so.
Because it's easy to do it.
Uh, it's not, it shouldn't be that easy. It should be, should not be that easy. Okay, so add climate action advisory to thank you page. And I think I can squeeze one in. Everything was so balanced, okay?
You can take out, well, and I suppose you have to leave everyone I've forgotten in case.
Okay, um, because I apparently forgot someone. Okay, thank you. Any other amendments to this page? Okay, then let's move on to the next. Nothing's moving.
Actually, sorry, it, the reason why is because it's it's K R E I, uh, Anderson Krieger.
Oh my, it's been like that for years.
Hmm, it's been wrong for years.
Art didn't say anything about that, you know, Art I hear is 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 retiring, so we should say goodbye to Art.
Heard, I heard that yesterday.
Yeah, okay, so this is our transition slide, so we can transition right through this.
Okay.
Um, next slide is, this is our inventory of multi-unit developments. And there hasn't been a lot different here, except that uh the two forty Bs are under construction. Uh, and Commerce Place has been approved. And we now have four of the units at Commerce Place go on the S H I because they're uh eighty percent. And two of them do not because they are above eighty percent. I think I got that correct. Um, we no longer are in safe harbor.
Actually, March eighteenth. I thought it was the twenty first as well, because that was when we had it stamped in, but uh it it ended up being March eighteenth that we lost safe harbor.
Okay, so this is on slide four.
Um, question, so even though we have approved the Main Street, Main Street and Commerce Place, they still show up on the S H I even though two of them are appealed and and Cam- Commerce Place still has to go through conservation?
Oh, no, they don't show up on the S H I. These are S H I eligible. They only go on the S H I if they have been permitted. And so um maybe I should make that clear.
Yeah, I was actually gonna ask what was included in the four point nine percent if.
Yeah, the four point, the four point nine does not include Converse Place.
Okay, so how should I, so I need to change this so it's obvious that Converse Place is not included in the S H I.
No, 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 yeah, four, no, four, yeah, the four point nine is um sorry, the four point nine uh is uh four sixteen Cambridge Street and nineteen thirty five River Street. Those were the last two because the uh seven thirty five and six fifty four they never got put on the list because they were appealed immediately. Um, so the it's with four sixteen and nineteen thirty five, we are um at four point nine percent. So ten Converse Place is nothing to do with the four nine.
So I will clarify that only uh River Street and Cambridge count towards the uh S H I.
Or, yeah, I mean, I think it's just the River Street one. Uh, sorry, Ca- Cambridge Street is going back on, it was off for a long time, and now it's going back on, which which get, which put us from three point eight to four point nine. So that was, yeah, so Cambridge Street went on and off. Sorry, but it does, and then back on, but it does count it.
Right now, the only two projects on this slide that count are the two forty Bs.
Correct.
So that's, so I will, I will amend the slide somehow.
And can you add the waterfield to it somehow, or no?
It's not approved, it's, it's.
Hasn't even been applied, hasn't even been applied for.
Yeah.
In permitting, it's not even in permitting, yeah.
It's an.
Clarification would be that these are multi-unit developments um that includes subsidized housing inventory for which a special permit has been requested, but applied for. As opposed to waterfield where the special permit has not even been applied for yet.
I thi- I think approved, applied and approved, right?
Yeah, so.
In the case of Converse to to Yeching's point, it's requiring one more approval.
No, we technically could go put it, we could put it on.
Oh, that's.
The S H I, we're not going to, we're not, it doesn't make sense to do this at all, but technically, according to the law, we could put ten Converse Place on because it's when it's approved. If nothing happens for twelve to eighteen months, zero activity, it can get taken off the S H I. So but but you were allowed to get it on as soon as it is approved.
Okay.
So that I'm, so I was wrong when I said it's when it was permitted, it's just when the permit has been approved, okay?
So I think it's one of the same, permitted and approved, yeah, permitted and approved.
But isn't a permit meaning it goes through the building department?
No, a special permit is their notion or their um signal to proceed further.
Okay, I always assumed it was when you actually got a building permit, because otherwise the town could, okay.
No, no, so it for that, as as far as the S H I goes, it's when the permitting granting authority approves the project. That's when you're allowed to get it on, and then if no activity, like I said, then if no activity occurs, there is no building permit, you know. Because they want, they want towns to get them, you know, on, they, so so yeah, they're making it, they're making it easier to get it on.
So is there a reason we haven't applied for the, we just haven't got around to putting this on our?
Which one?
The Converse. If we got four units, we got four units, we should put it on our.
Yeah, this is something that I'm working with Marty Jones on and
Okay, sounds.
And because there are other units that are not under ours, that we're just gonna do a whole batch of all of them uh together.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so Converse Place should be on there, but it's in process, and to be honest, it's not gonna change four point nine to five point oh, I doubt. So. Will be on S H I. But that's in process.
Okay, can I ask two, two additional quick questions? Seven thirty five Main Street doesn't have any S H I units. Is there a reason why it's on here? Like, should we just take it off? If the purpose of the slide is to calculate S H I.
I think it's helpful to show that it's a C B D development.
Seven thirty five is not, seven thirty five is not C B D, it's the first project, uh, the first parcel in G B D.
Yeah.
And it's more of just adding to the denominator uh uh of the S H I count, and that would be the reason, but it is confusing, I would agree, Kurt. But but, yeah.
I do too, I agree.
Originally, slide was supposed to capture two things. All multi-unit developments and how they affected our S H I. So if we want to make it just about S H I, then I agree. Um, but.
I think it's such a, it's such a um subtle difference that it's probably better to keep it really simple. Um, our town meeting numbers. I think it's such a, it's such a, um, subtle difference that it's probably better to keep it really simple. Um, our town meeting numbers.
Sure, so we can take seven thirty five off, um, that's fine. I just, I, traditionally, we have said things about which multi-unit developments.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of nice to, to know what, what else is going on, um, but, uh, I, I don't really.
To that point, what is the, what, what is the message to planning, to the town meeting, if, in, implicit, or that you wish to make with this slide?
I just wanna let, it's, this is just a, an inventory.
S H I is the main point.
No, the main point was, well, there are two points here, multi-unit developments and the S H I.
Oh, well, let's put and. Or say multi-unit developments impact on S H I, something like that.
I think it's helpful to see that multi-unit development getting appealed. I, I think that was a big point of ten commerce too, is just that. These big projects are trying to get through, but they get appealed.
Yeah, so, so again, we can, we can, we can split this into two slides and simply have one which says, here are the projects which we know about in town. And then here's a slide which says, here's how they impact the S H I.
Well, you do it in this slide, it's just changing the header in the blue stripe at the top to say.
Yeah, I think that's fine, too. I, again, as long as we're certain this includes all multi-unit developments in town.
Well, so, in, in, in multi-unit developments that have received approval from a permit granting authority for a special permit, so like Cross Street comes to mind, Brian.
Or have, or have applied. This is just for those applications, don't, projects don't exist until they've actually submitted paperwork.
So what about Cross Street, Brian?
What, um, what about, oh, eighty seven, eighty nine Cross Street, the, that, um, there's, it's not an application, it's a, it's a still, as, yeah, nothing's been on paper in step two of nine, essentially, of the, uh, of doing the potential funding for to be with them.
Okay.
So, so it's early, it's too early, yeah.
I also see this as really powerful to see that the things that are getting built are the forty Bs.
Hmm.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point, He Ching.
Okay, so I'm gonna change the title to multi-unit development and impact on S H I.
Then, while, while you're doing that, yeah, I have just a high level question that I, I'm embarrassed to know the answer to, but what does it take to get us out of safe harbor? Is it just, is, I'm assuming it's not hitting ten percent because we were in safe harbor before, is it just creation of a certain number of affordable units in a certain period of time?
Yeah, so it's creating either forty units in a, forty units in a year because of us, because of, we're around eight thousand units. So if we create forty units, which is a half a percent, we can get a year of safe harbor. If we produce at least eighty units on the S H I, so yeah, it's, 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 it's units on the S H I, so it, it, it incentivizes rental. Because you'd only, you know, to get that, to get forty units on the, eh, S H I, you either have to get, you know, twenty five percent of those be rental, or forty condos that are all affordable, which is unlikely. So the idea is that, so it's either forty or eighty will give you two years, and that is the max you can get. You can only get a max of safe harbor of two years. Uh, so that, that's another way.
We've already burned through, we've already burned through the safe harbor for River Street and Cambridge Street.
Yeah, so the idea was to piggyback the River Street, Cambridge Street to cook up Waterfield and Washington and Swanton at the same time, so at least those, if we got those two projects together around the same time, that could give us another two years. But those, both of those got held up for various reasons, but the idea is that the I, yeah, the idea was to, to do those two projects for a number of reasons, but one of them would be to continue the safe harbor.
So these are questions that, um, I think we can reasonably anticipate will come up in town meeting. It's this question of, of, um, this, what, what is needed to be done to preserve safe harbor for one year and for two years, and the discussion of the forty units or the eighty units is a meaningful data point to put in front of town meeting, I think.
Yeah, I think they're gonna wanna know that.
Okay, so add, um, add requirement for achieving safe harbor.
So, yeah, there's the, it's the forty percent, sorry.
This is gonna be one packed slide.
Well, you can make it two slides.
Yeah, I think, yeah, uh, the ways to do it are either, yeah, forty units, eighty units, or a total of, at the moment, eight hundred, around eight hundred units. Because that's ten percent of our year-round housing stock.
So I will, okay, so I will, um, add a separate slide on how to achieve safe harbor. And, uh,
I want town meeting to walk away with an understanding, which I think they partially have, or parts of people, and some people, and tell me, I understand, that what Brian said earlier about incentivizing rentals, that when we add to the denominator by building more and more non-affordable housing, that we get farther and farther away from safe harbor.
Well, I think that's, that, that I can show with a, with essentially a denominator, nominator thing, a fraction, yeah.
Yeah, that's a really, that's a major point to me in understanding why Winchester is not in safe harbor. It has to do with the fact that the safe harbor includes all the units in a rental building, whether they're.
Yeah.
Deeded, or not deeded, but recorded.
Yeah, and, and that, that is, uh, you'll notice that in the, the right last from, second, the penultimate column, where it says rental and owner, you'll see that the rental ones are in all green as my way of showing that if it's rental, you get to check all of the units, so that is, this is a slide that has an awful lot packed in there, but certainly something to talk to, I, I will.
Absolutely, it's gonna raise a lot of questions, it will raise a lot of support for the Washington Swanton being kept as a rental property.
Well, I think that'll, we will see.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
We will see, because, yeah, it'll make the, rental properties actually don't, are, are the finances on rental properties are worse than on condos.
That's right, and so then you get to the philosophical questions of.
Where do you, how do you pay for a five million dollar eminent domain taking with only rentals? So, um, in the interest of time, um, we're gonna assume that we will have those answers, we can move on to the next slide.
Oh, I, yeah, the only other changes that I had, um, well, on the next slide, the current and upcoming projects, you said public forum may question mark, and I believe it's the twenty fifth at the Jenks.
Okay.
And in the lower right corner, you said M B T A community zoning, and I think it's called multi-family zoning.
Yeah, okay, so let's, let's take that one at a time, so the public forum was May the. The.
Twenty, twenty fifth, wasn't it a Wednesday night?
Um, I will, yeah, at the time, I didn't have anything handy, so I will, um, verify that, I have to take a staple out or something like.
Correct.
Okay, so page five, uh, so A D U is May twenty fifth.
At the Jenks.
At Jenks, um, and then the, so going in line, so the public forum was March, I don't know what the tree forum was, I forget when that was. Did you have that number, Sally, or did you?
Um, oh, you mean, the, the past? Tree forum, I don't see where that is on the slide, I'm sorry, oh, there it was, yes, um, March, I can find it, keep going and I'll look it up.
Yeah, so the other thing is, I, Brian, there were three, there were three, uh, legs to the stool on the tree working group that you always say so well, and I've forgotten exactly what the language was. And that's what's in that red box.
No, I bel- uh, I believe that's it, I'll double check, but I believe, I believe that is it.
Okay, so is the word regulation or legislation?
Legislature, sorry, it is legislation, yes.
So it's, so tree is education outreach, legislation, okay? And then, uh.
February third.
The public forum was February third.
Doesn't that seem like thousands of years ago?
February three, zero, three?
Let me verify, I just found it in my.
I just, I believe you, it just seems forever ago.
Brian, Zakali, does that match your calendar?
Okay.
Yeah, it does, I'm looking at it in your calendar.
Okay, February third, and then, uh, M B T, you, um, Sally, you had, um, another.
Right, it, it's not called M B T A, well, I guess it is, it's M B T A communities, multi-family zoning.
Yeah, that was long.
Okay, so how about M B T A multi-family zoning?
Yeah, I will, I will make it fit, M B A communities, multi-family zoning.
Does, yeah, take out, you just say M B T A multi-family zoning.
Okay.
Well, when you take out, pretty sure this is somewhat wrong, you'll gain a little.
Oh, came some space, yes, okay, so that, did I miss any projects here? This is just projects until our next town meeting, I wanna be, although I do talk about when some of the zoning is coming up. But.
Um, this is not a project, but I know with some ARPA money, they're trying to, uh, the, the select board manager's office is trying, uh, and it looks like the, we are going to hire an economic development consultant for two years. So it's kind, um, so that's some, somebody who I will be working with, and I, um, I don't know exactly the interface or how much, uh, but, um, that, I don't know how to really put that in here, but it, maybe it's kind of try to, uh, try to work with, work with that, with that new hire.
Is that, is that money coming out of the planning board budget?
No, ARPA.
ARPA, so, um, who is the reporter of the use of ARPA monies to town meeting, is that the select board?
And really the manager, but yes.
Maybe it can be in the select board or the manager's report.
I think it will be, um, but it's more of like, we can say like, looking forward to working with, I don't, I don't know what to do, because it's not really, maybe it's too much information.
And then, the only other thing i- is if you wanna put master plan implementation committee as a primary bullet on this slide.
Oh, okay, you're right, ARPA money, I can, okay, looking forward to working, I'll make sure I have that in my notes. Um, add M P I C, okay, how did I forget M P I C, okay?
Because it's easy.
Shouldn't be easy. Okay, anything else I've forgotten? Okay. And.
Oh, I had comments on the next.
Okay, good, so, what I did on this one is I, I tried to simplify it, so it takes away all of the general language and leaves it just for what it applies to Winchester. So people don't have to know that we're a bus community, I don't think that's important. I think that what, it's just the numbers as applied to us, so go ahead, comment.
My question was the word must on the fifth bullet, because when I read the guidelines, they went into this whole thing about how none of this is required, this is all strongly recommended, or whatever the language was, but it specifically said, you didn't have to, you didn't have to build sixteen hundred units.
No, you must zone.
The, the requirement is to zone, you must zone for it in order to get, be eligible, sorry, in order to be eligible for certain pockets of money at the state level.
Maybe we can say that, must, and, yeah, you did emphasize zone.
Yeah, and I, I would just say that, that's is, is the concert, which word, which word, um?
Well, I was confused by the word must, but now I understand, because you clarified, that it's not that we must permit and build, it's that we must zone for. And perhaps the only point that you would make about that is pending Brian Zakali's, um, good letter that he sent about, you know, like, our feedback on this, that we're hoping that North Main Street, which is more like between a, a mile and a half, or up to a mile and a half away, would still be eligible, is that right, Brian?
That, that was just one way to, one way to bake the cake, uh, essentially, um, there are, um, obviously a, a number of different ways, but I thought that that made the most sense for what was on the ground and what were some reasonable goals for town.
I mean, how big, how big a building would have to be built to have sixteen hundred units in it?
So I'm, I, yeah, I, that, that. Yeah, well, no, 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 it's very important, it's just our next agenda item, uh, and I'm gonna go into that.
Okay.
Yeah.
But Sally, when you say must permit and, um, must permit and build, by zoning it, is like, it would be by right, that you, it would just be, it wouldn't even need a permit, like you would just be able to buy right.
No, no, just the use, the, you, the use has to be by right, we have to have a minimum gross density, meaning of someone could come in, they might be, they might, um, the use has to be by right.
Yes.
Of, of the, of the density.
Yeah.
The idea, it, it would say, it would say multi-family of at least fifteen units per acre, that would be the use, that's not talking about the dimensions, okay?
So that's really good to clarify that, that what we would have to do to be in compliance in order to qualify for certain funding is if we update our zoning code, specifically the table of uses, to permit sixteen hundred multi-family building units um, in, in acceptable distance from the.
It's, it, it's much more compli- it, it is much more complicated than just, than just changing a table of uses, but we can actually, again, I'll talk about this more, we can get technical assistance, but DM, you just wanna say, this is like, the, 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 the.
This is.
Drill us down, uh, like bare bones, what it's, what's required.
And, and, and I note that John Serbeer, uh, Chair of the Housing Partnership Board has his hand raised. So John, do, do you wanna say something really quick here, or?
Uh, yes, I, I make two points, I make sure you make two points, uh, the current guidelines are draft, they're not in final form, and I was at a meeting on Monday in which, uh, the comment was made that currently D H C D is uh, anticipating that they would finalize these some point during the summer, so that's uh, potentially five months away, uh, so this is a puzzle, it's not been finalized yet. The second, uh, point I would make is that, uh, there's been quite a bit of opposition, uh, by communities to this, uh, guideline, uh, the comment also was made that, uh, D H C D has heard the comments, and so, uh, you know, I mean, it's possible that they will just tweak a word here and there and finalize them. I think it's more likely that there's gonna be some substantive changes because, uh, you have communities like Woburn who are saying, we refuse to comply, uh, there was reference, uh, in the meeting on Monday, that the legis- the legislature, there's so much opposition, the legislature may actually remove this whole section, uh, and said that's, this is not what we intended, uh, so I think that, uh, I would clearly label this as a draft and it's subject to change.
Okay. I have that in capital letters on my piece of paper here. Thank you.
That's really helpful, John.
Yeah.
I mean, I kinda knew that, but I didn't know the level of discontent, if that's the word.
Yeah, I mean, it would seem in any case that we would want an expanded definition of the radius, uh, as, as defined by Brian in his letter.
Well, also, doesn't a bus stop count? Because there's five.
I guess, again, we have, we have a whole agenda item, we have a whole agenda item about all of this, so I'm sorry.
Thank you, Brian, keeping us, keeping us, uh.
Let's go into the next slide.
Next slide.
Yes.
So the, the question I had about eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Wait, 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 eight, nine, ten, eleven, or we, we, we're still at seven.
You're right, I'm sorry.
Well, se- seven just explains what happens if we don't.
Just want to see if anyone has any comments on the slide.
Yeah.
And this is where I might actually put in more elucidation of subject to change.
I, I think we should have the conversation later, and then that will, that will, that will finish these slides on its own.
Oh, okay, great, then I won't have to do any work.
Yeah, not for the, not for the, yeah, so it'll just write itself.
Okay, now.
These are, these are deadlines, these are important, uh, I don't know how, I don't know how important.
Well, but the one that I did not pick up until my rereading is that we have to submit a proposed action plan by the end of this year, which includes, so we actually have to write something, but I thought where our deadline was next March, it's the end of this year.
Yeah.
Correct, it, it's, it's just an, essentially, an outline of, of how, uh, the, it's going to be achieved, um.
What I don't know is how specific it has to be about the zoning changes we will need to make.
Well, that's where technical assistance can help.
Yeah, e- exactly, and there's going, there is, there's already, uh, yeah, there's a lot of money that's going towards towns to specifically do just that, to update the zoning bylaw, to accommodate what the town wants to do that is compliant with the law.
So, so my only point is, I don't know how much of that up, I don't know what a proposed action plan means, is it a one-page piece of paper saying? up, I don't know what a proposed action plan means, is it a one-page piece of paper saying we will put forward zoning in November of twenty twenty-three, or does it have to say we need to, here's what the zoning will do, but that's for our next conversation, Brian is about to remind me of that. Um, so let's move on to the next slide.
Right, so I missed, oh, when I, I misspoke when I slumped these slides together, slides nine through thirteen. It seemed to me, they were telling a story, they were unfolding a story, but I wanted to know what, if you could frame why you're presenting this level of detail to the town meeting.
Yes, and I, I, I am a little worried about the level of detail, so what I want to do is to, um, provide a context of what the population is now, so the first slide says, look at our population, we have one of the youngest total populations, and this is what is driving, is there predominantly kids going to school? So in terms of the finances of the town, this is killing us. Not because we have lots of kids, but because we don't have enough revenue positive households to, to, to pay for the kids. And so, again, the question is, which town do we want to look more like in terms of our population? So, we have different towns nearby, and I would say that, for instance, Arlington and Woburn, which have a, a larger population of the thirty-five to forty-nines, or the twenty to thirty-fours, rather, is a population which probably is something we would want to aim for in terms of tax revenues, in terms of the future. Because, uh, what we have now essentially are people who show up to town, um, and it's, I call them long-range rentals. They're in town, they buy an expensive house because that's all they can buy, as soon as their kids leave town, they leave because they don't want to get stuck with a high mortgage. So this is a snapshot of population, so the next slide is also, is a snapshot of what, how do people live in town, and as you can see, we are by far the, the highest percentage of ownership. So this gets back to, as you pointed out previously, Sally, affordability. You can't, you can't attract that younger population if they can't afford to live here, and there is an obvious disparity between us, even in our so-called cohort communities. But certainly, if we're looking at what I would call more balanced communities, we are way down in terms of rentals. And then the next
Point that we had before, which Brian will go into.
Yeah, and so then the next slide talks about, I forget what the next slide talks about. It's a snapshot of incomes, I think everyone looks at the incomes and they kind of understand that we've got really high incomes, so that's not a surprise for homeowners. The slide after this, though, I think will be a surprise to most people, which is that if you look at the income of the people who rent in town, it's much more like Woburn and Medford than it is like our cohort communities of Lexington and Wellesley. So what we're seeing is the renters in town are spending a lot, they're, they're, they're clinging, they're staying in town despite overwhelming odds because they're paying a lot more for their properties than those in Winch, in Woburn and Medford. So we have much lower income rental households, even though the rental property here is probably more expensive than Woburn. So we have a different population of renters than our cohort communities, and we have to, we have to, they have separate, they have different issues, so.
Relay the SHIs of each of these towns relative to this, because is, is the answer here that Lexington has like ten, they're at ten percent? And like, that's why they have a larger number of people in that income bracket?
That's a good question, can I?
Yeah, mo- a lot, so Lexington and Concord, they basically solved a lot of their or near, or a lot of their forty B problems by putting large forty Bs on the outskirts of town.
Yeah, and so maybe the next
Well, the other data point on this slide that's relevant is the percentage of people in each town, whether, um, um, on the renters slide and all, but I guess supposedly on the housing ownership side too, who are cost burdened.
Yeah, I was gonna put that in there too, but there's just, there's
Because that's really important, you could have, you could have, if we had affordable rentals in town and your income was low, you wouldn't be cost burdened, so the, the degree to which our rental population is more percentage-wise cost burdened than these other benchmark communities speaks to the need for rentals in town.
Yes, so I do have that plot, that chart.
It's just so complex for people in
It's very complex, and that's, I'm a little concerned about that, the next slide, Brian, if you go to the next slide, I think it does answer some of those questions as to why is it that Lexington, and as Brian pointed out, if you look at the percentage of housing stock, which is larger units, so it's the dark blue, you'll see that Lexington has a reasonable about more than we do. But, this I think is one of the questions that I want to ask is what do we, we know that we have to build more housing in Winchester, the question is what is the distribution that we're looking for in order to get eight hundred more units, which is what we need to meet our need? Do you want to have them in large units, do you want them spread out, so we can look at which of these, each of these different communities, people have a mental vision of what they look like? This is the actual distribution of their housing types, which you, is there a template out there we could look at and say this is the way we want Winchester to look like, here's a pattern we can use to move forward, or here's a distribution of housing we don't like. So I don't think we want to be, you know, I, I really don't like, you know, two hundred plus units, those are really big.
I'd be very interested to see what Concord has done. I mean, traditionally.
It's, it's townhouse clusters.
Um, I, I mean, I just, just the fact that they've made their numbers, I, I, I think warrants at least a look.
Well, they have more land.
They have a lot more land, that's
They, they made a conscious decision to put a couple, not a lot, not, not like, you know, a couple of very large developments on the outs, like I said, of the outskirts, um, so that, that, that's how they did it. They, they had the land and they had the will to put it, um, so it's, it's, it is clusters, but it's, it's, it's very large development. Uh, but that's, that's how they did it.
Yeah, that's not, that's not what we're gonna
We just don't have the, we just don't have the, the land.
But I think that we need to consider, uh, a, a hybrid of, of many different approaches.
And that, that is going to take a lot of finessing to get town to understand that. Because we're not going to be able, for instance, to put sixteen hundred units up and down North Main Street if we wanted to. It would just be solid housing.
Right.
No commercial.
And it would be very tall housing, too.
It would be, it's, yeah, so I think there's a, there's a convert, I, what I'm, I, I know this is really a lot of data, but I'm trying to come up with a way of starting a conversation, so town meeting knows that we're going to be, have to be making some decisions in the next few years. And they're, they're complex decisions because we, there was no simple, let's just put in, you know, a thousand units at Holton Street and be done with it, we can't do that. So.
And, I, I
Yeah.
Sorry, I, I think then with these few slides that are important, I think putting a sentence, a very tight conclusion at each, on each of these slides, then maybe is the answer, because it is really important, but if, let me just go through these, I mean, this is the last one. But all of these, one, two, three, four, I mean, obviously they're different colors and they're telling completely different things, but I think having even like you're saying, you know, like, we have, you know, out of all of, out of all of these, just saying, uh, you know, we have the highest homeownership, just saying that, we have the highest homeownership.
Yeah, even go back to number nine and start with, the summary conclusion, not even starting with number nine, is, is
Yeah, it's all of these graphs, all of these graphs should have one sent, like, not even a sentence, like five words.
Okay, so every, every, every graph should have a, the, the highlight that people
A thesis, a thesis statement or a conclusion, because it's
What we want the town meeting member to get, to take away from this slide, hand it to them.
Right. And I, I Yeah, so, I, 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 you know, my next cut on this was to say circle Winchester, so you could see where it was, and so to make it a little more visually obvious. Um, but that requires, you know, work, so, um, so
I think having a, having a summary or a conclusion statement or a, or a takeaway line, like Brian
At the bottom, taking out the, the date and the planning board report here, but keeping the, but keeping the slide and just putting this, because anything else on here, I think will be, you know, this is a good size. So that's how I would say, I would say, put the five words, or whatever it is at the bottom here, and take out those things.
Yeah, but if you're overburdened, I can help you with some of the graphics, too.
Oh, sure, I would love that help, I, I'm just, it took me a long time to get this in this form because when you get it from the website, it has, I had to redo all of the
Yeah.
The fonts and everything, so, so it was a bit of a pain, so replace footer with takeaway. And, uh, yeah, so that would be good, and this, one of the things I'm wondering is whether, when we're done with this, we actually, we're gonna have an electronic copy available, of course. Do we want to have a paper copy of the plots, or just let people have electronic? I'm worried, I don't want to waste trees on something, so.
I think electronic seems fine, you can reference it.
And, yeah, so, uh, so there's that, and then I don't have a conclusion slide because I ran out of time. So I think the conclusion slide is really in order to make progress on our issues, and they are, they're not just, um, housing related in terms of the housing need, there's actually a financial interest we have in, in changing our demographics, because we are a residential community and we get most of our tax income from residences. And we do have some people who, we need to change our, our makeup in order to have a more sustainable income. And so this is part of that. Um, so, but that's, any other conclusions that I should bring up? Just, because I, I, this is my vision of this talk, what are, what are your visions, what have I missed?
I think that there could be a summary of tools to get there, so, um, for example, you know, s- uh, more density, but also like smaller, um, it's various ways to increase units, right, so we're talking about ADUs perhaps, or um, the possibility of decreasing, um, minimum watt size or frontage and things like that, you know, so that um, increasing the density to two families, allowing, um, by right, two, three families. Those kinds of things would distribute the density um, and not, not do what the other towns have done, which is just to sort of relegate a lot of the um, unfavorable things to the sides, which, which I don't think is a very fair way to do it.
I don't think we should exclude a, a particular solution, you know, we, I think we have to have
But I don't think that a lot of people understand what that some of the solutions might be. So to, to, so, like, give them the toolbox of how this could happen, you know?
Brian, Brian has this beautiful slide, Brian, when you went to a, a conference last year, and it was a slide which showed the, the, essentially, a continuum between the single family and the large development, which showed all sorts of different sized and shaped units that you could put in.
It was the, it was the true definition, a lot of people misuse the word missing middle. Uh, when it comes to housing, they, they think it has to do with middle priced. And it does, has nothing to do with it, it has to do with the units that are between, the, the structures that are between like, three and thirty. So, so just so, yeah, so that, that is what the missing middle is, it's that, it's that, it's that density level that's missing, not, not a I mean, there, there is certainly a missing middle income, but that's
You said three and thirty, you mean density?
Three and thirty units, like the
Units per acre.
No, units per building, the missing middle has to do, has to do with the building, that is, that's what I'm saying, it's misused a lot, it has to do with those types of structures that are between, you know, not duplexes and not massive hundred units, you know, the ones that it can actually fit into neighborhoods, and those turn out they're between to about, between three and thirty units.
So on slide thirteen, it would be clarifying to change the little header that says number of units to say housing type.
Oh, could you go to list like thirteen, please, Brian?
So right there, up above the, the vertical color bar, it would say housing type, and then you could just add the word units after the four numbers, the four ranges, and then it would be, because when I first looked at this, I didn't know what I, I thought, number of units to what? It's to the housing type.
Okay, number of units to the housing type, okay.
But so, going back to E Ching's point, though.
So if I just put a pound sign after each of these, that would be enough, because if I say pound units, it gets crowded.
We could say two units, three to four units, five to nine units, ten plus units, you can't do that, is it too many words, Brian?
I just am looking at, I can put them in, that's easy, it's just a question of the density. But, yeah, okay, add units after each, after, in, after each legend entry. Okay.
Or you could say number of units per building, is that, and just put that at the top, and then that, does that make sense now?
That's also an option, right. Units per whatever, yeah. So, but can you go back to what is your, you know, we have, we're building a story here, we've got the the key takeaway from slide nine, from slide ten, from slide eleven, from slide twelve, from slide thirteen, you mentioned that you don't have your conclusion slide, but if you have your little key takeaway statement in the blue bar at the bottom of those slides, they build a story to what is your final takeaway, and I just wanted to hear again from you what that is.
The final takeaway is that Winchester has to change the way it zones in order to accommodate new housing types to meet our needs. That the needs are various and that it's going to be a complicated discussion and town meeting, and this is going to happen over the next several years, so this is sort of
That's a good takeaway, like everybody needs to get ready.
Yeah, so I think one of the things that we need to do is we have to keep coming back before town meeting and continually educate them about the complexity of the situation, so that when zoning comes forward, they will understand more about why we're moving in a particular direction.
Is that a segue to talk about, um, um, the, the things that we're working on, like ADUs? Or is that not a good idea?
You know, so that's, that's a good question, and, and, and one of the things, I mean, we could move we could move the existing project slide to the end. The question is, do we want to take the ADU work out of that slide, or just add it in as perhaps
How, how long, how long do you, did you plan on having this?
Two hours and seven minutes?
Well, is it, is it five minutes? Is it ten minutes?
I think I'm gonna try for, for seven. I'm gonna ask, or get five, I'm gonna ask for an extension, and I'm gonna try to end at seven just in case, because I know that I tend to talk longer than I want to. So, um, that is my concern, that maybe there are too many slides, there are thirteen slides, normally I'd say a slide a minute. But the first slide, the first two slides, I think we can go through fairly quickly because they are, um, oh yeah, and, and let's not forget that the title slide is slide one, so we can
Right, and, and the Bi- Bi- Bienvenue and Au Revoir slide will not take a minute.
Yeah, so, so this one, this one is
Ten slides, yeah, it's really tense.
Ten slides divided by seven minutes, what is that?
Very fast.
Forty seconds.
Yeah, so
Wow, good job, Brian.
I will, I will be time testing this to make sure, I, I do these, you know, I, I go through these like a hundred times before I give it, and I'm still off when I give them, so.
So E Ching had a point about a slide that would show the toolkit of solutions, and where, where did you fall on that idea?
I, I think it's a great idea, I've written down all of E Ching's suggestions, if you have, anyone has any other suggestions, you can just send them to me. I think that's okay, we're not deliberating. Um, and so then I would, I would like to add in that toolkit, I would like to add that slide that Brian hopefully can produce, which shows this, this um, continuum of housing types, so that people get an idea of what's possible. And maybe that's, um, maybe that's a slide that I end on, so it's visually, people have that in their mind as I close off. So that might be a way of ending the, the presentation.
I wonder if that will scare people, see that, like, to, to see the visual of how Winchester's gonna look?
It's a really good question, E Ching, and the question is, um, is that something that It's a really good question, E Ching, and the question is, um, is that something that kind of needs to happen anyway?
To scare them a little bit. I, I think that the toolkit would be really helpful, though. Be like, here, here are some of the ways that. We could achieve what we need to do with the town and, and the, the population versus the housing needs. And here are some of the ways to do that. And, you know, like. With the toolcase ADUs, oh, we're working on this. Oh, with, with rezoning, oh, we're thinking about this for Main Street, you know, things like that. A, a little segue into how like, the, you know, in the coming, coming years, this is gonna change, and so here are some of the ways we're gonna do it, so prepare for. Prepare for using some of these tools to our benefit, to all of our benefit.
So, I, I, I think, um. So the toolkit is in, definitely. I think maybe the, the, um. The slide showing the, the, the continuum is something we present this fall, let's say. Maybe that's too much. If prepped everyone, the new town meeting members will be scared to death as soon as they hear all of this, cuz they'll say, oh my gosh. But this fall, they'll have, you know, six months under their belt. Oh, yes, this is the one.
I have the slide, um. It was something that. Brian brought up on the screen.
Right in front of us?
Oh, that, yeah, right.
Yeah, I think this.
I was gonna ask to see this, and it looks, it's very interesting.
Yeah.
Does it scare you, Nick?
Uh, I, I don't know. It looks, I think it looks kinda nice. I, I, you know, I, I like, um. You know, the ones that are kind of u- upper middle in there. Uh, I, you know, the ones that kind of reflect. What was, um, proposed for the water field lot.
I've been having battery problems. I might not be here in a minute.
Okay, so I just wanna point out that we are at twenty fifty-three, we're. And we still have to talk about MBTA zoning and warrant articles. So, I think that, um. I love the slide, and it doesn't have to be shown. I can hold off on showing it if, if it. Uh, there will be a time issue with this talk, undoubtedly. And so if I have to pull something, maybe it's the slide, but we have a chance in the fall. Again, we're gonna be coming back every six months. And reminding people of what we've done and what we need to do, so.
No, it'd be nice to spend more time as a group on that. I think it, it certainly, uh. I, I, just a glance was, it was encouraging to just have that look at it.
Yeah. Um, okay, so that is it for me, I think. So, um, I don't know that we have. We don't have any meetings prior to town meeting. We do, so unless, well, we, we.
Just, the right before town meeting.
Just, yeah, literally the evening of town meeting, so I don't know that I can make any quick edits at that point, so.
We'd have to upload it already before that.
Yeah, so if you're okay with the general. Um, direction of this, then the only, and I've got lots of comments from you folks. Then the only thing I would say is I'll go ahead and you may see fewer slides depending upon my timing. And that's, and hopefully it'll still be coherent.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for putting that together, I guess it's.
It's one of the benefits of being chair. Something to look forward to, Sally. Um, okay, so now, uh, let's quickly go through the warrant articles, um, and, uh. As you probably saw in Brian's notes, uh, there are. I think very few articles which say planning board or land use on them. And I had a copy here somewhere. Yep, there we go. So, um. I hope you've had a chance to look through them. To be honest, about the only thing that I saw. We could possibly talk about under, um. I don't know if the, the article eight on, uh. Local voting rights, uh, that goes, I think, towards our sense of community. Uh, it's not a land use thing. But everything else, I believe, is. Financial, or there's a transfer of land in order to do, uh.
Lynch.
Construction on Lynch, yeah. So I, I think there's nothing else.
I think the article twenty-six is pretty important on land use and historical resources.
Oh, I'm sorry, article, oh, this is the one for the, uh, the school. Yeah.
EFPC, and I, I can update what I know about it from kinda talking to EFPC people and school committee people, but, um.
Okay, well, why don't, why don't we just quickly go through here sequentially? And the only one that I wanted to bring up, uh, was section eight, article eight. Does the board want to take a position on article eight, which is the, um. Extend local voting rights?
Is there any reason that we wouldn't wanna do that? I mean, it seems. A, a lot of our neighbors are from other, other countries, but seem to, seem to be in every other respect. Uh, having their kids at school and.
So, yeah, so I think this is a question of how the, so this isn't like your typical land use article. And so while I, I, I'm just, you know, I, I know that I am strongly in favor of this, I, but the planning board typically tries not to. Comment on things that are not within its purview, I guess.
Yeah, it almost feels like asking our opinion, but. But not as a professional group, so I'm not sure that it's of any value.
So, I, I, what I, what I would advise here is that, uh, that you, you take a position. If you, if you, um, but to o- only, uh, have that position in your pocket. If the planning board is asked for their position. Meaning I don't think it's absolutely necessary that the planning board say something, meaning go out of their way to wish to speak and talk to it. However, it's always good that if you think that there's a motion, that the planning board might want to be. Uh, or that might have a say on it, you would take the vote, and then if it's, if it's asked, you at least have that information.
So, I am just going to, um. Quote from our master plan. Implementation committee. And where we're asking candidates for the committee. To be a resident who is invested in creating a more sustainable, inclusive, and resilient Winchester. So that is actually a, um. Oh, I would call it part of our unofficial mission statement. So, if I were to go from that perspective, I would say that the planning board should make a statement on this.
I think that's a great reason, yeah, um, for us to take a stand on that. The, the community building, the inclusivity of it, I think that this speaks to very powerfully. So I, I would be in favor of that.
Um, so Kurt and Sally. Do you have a position on this in terms of whether we should take a position?
I, I don't.
Oh, somebody's got echo.
No, this is, I don't know how to fix this, wait.
Sally, you're the phone, the phone that phoned in, right? I would just hang up on the phone.
You're, you're muted, Sally.
You're still muted, but I think if you hang up on the phone, I think you're coming through just fine on the.
Can you?
We can hear you. Whoa, yep, yep. Um, again, if you, if it is on the phone, I would turn your phone off, just like hang up on the phone. There's nothing there, interesting.
Or, or hang up your Zoom. Just pick one, I think, should work.
Yeah, but there's only one here. That's the weird part.
What's weird is we're getting an echo and we can only get the echo. Yeah, that's weird. Oops.
Is it, there's only, yeah, she dropped, so, um, that was strange. Anyway.
She unmute her phone, though, and speak?
It wasn't her phone, so I, I let, I just let someone in, uh, but anyway, I bet she's gonna come back in in a second.
Yeah, so, um. So, why don't we wait for Sally? And while, um, just for scheduling reasons. I think that, um. So we're running quite a bit late this evening. Um, the MBTA communities thing is something that we will be visiting a lot over the next few weeks. So if there is, um. I think I'd like, so the question before the board is. Do we want to just have a very short? We still have another, probably another ten or fifteen minutes on town warrant issues, I bet. Um, because of the. School administration bid, building, maybe not fifteen. Um, but then the question is, do we want to move MBTA zoning to another date? So that we can just do the minutes and then finish off today?
That might be, um, I'm not sure that we have a choice. I mean, if we wanna, I mean.
Unless you wanna go until ten.
No, I, I don't think that, uh, that wouldn't be an option for.
No, because it's in a draft form right now. I think that it's, it's okay to table it.
I, I think it's, if we had to, um, I think we're gonna wait for Sally to come back. Hopefully we get Sally back. I mean, one of the, uh, just very briefly, one of the problems with the guidelines is that you can read the guidelines. And still not get it right because they put a lot more information in their frequently asked questions. And so there is a discrepancy between those and the guidelines, and I fell into that trap. Cuz I tried to come up with. Something based just on the guidelines, and Brian was like, no, no, no. And I'm like, what do you mean, no? And he says, well, just look at those questions, and it says something totally different. So there is a lot of confusion as to which holds. Is it the guidelines? Is it the clarification? So, there's a lot of, um, confusion.
Sally might be back, that there's a six-one-seven number.
It's been in there since before she.
Yeah, so. Why don't we, um. I know Sally, I think Sally was trying to say something on article eight. So. Sally could just call in. I'm gonna try texting Sally.
Oh, no, uh, uh, this is her number, actually.
Okay, but she's.
But she said she wasn't on the phone, but I, it's because.
She's probably using the Zoom app, coming in over the phone.
Okay. Yeah, I will remove. I'm gonna call her, how about that?
Okay. Well, why don't we go ahead then? I don't, we, we, we do need to move on, um. Why don't we, uh. I think it would make sense to, for Sally to come back and we can pick up article eight again, but move on to the article twenty.
Six.
Six, twenty-six, yeah, so go ahead.
Okay, um, I think that this has been in, um, talks around town a lot because through the town meeting, um, candidates. Um, for, for the League of Women Voters, that, that was one of the major questions that was asked around town. It's just amazing, this is, this is a really big deal. Um, for people, but, um, the Sandborne Carriage House is on the, the. Um, a campus, the Sandborne Campus, which is actually under the National Historic Preservation Registry. Um, the, the building itself is not, but the, the campus is. Um, and so. Based on some of the, uh, I mean, just based on that, I think that, that, that aligns with some of our, um. Historic preservation while develop, while going through development kind of a. Um, goals, and, and it's, it's to restore the carriage house, um, for use for the admin. Um, the public school admin offices, and it, I think it adds in addition. As well as restoring, and it adds an elevator, and, um, can house the admin. Um, for many, many, many years permanently. Um, the alternative right now is that they are at the Parkhurst Building, which is a, a school building. And so if you've ever been there, um, some, some of these. You know, classroom sized rooms are being used as offices for like one or two people. And so it's, uh, it's a misuse of. Building to program, um, and what they're hoping for is in, in the renovation of Lynch to. The fastest, the fastest and cleanest and, and, and most efficient and cheapest way. Would be to get all the kids out of Lynch, so that they could, they could just do the whole building and then move everybody back in. But that takes a lot of, um, moving, and so if they don't. They don't move the admin from Parkhurst, they would have to, um, procure a bunch of, um, temporary. Trailers for the kids, and it's, it's about twelve, and I think at about half a million dollars each, and that's for two years. And, you know, it's a temporary situation, um, and we spend that money and it disappears, and then they, they move back. Or they do the carriage house, renovate it, um, make it permanent for, for the admin, and then. Um, use Parkhurst as a swing space for Lynch, and then subsequently Morocco. And then if, after all that is done, that building could be leased out to some kind of private school, um. Like a Sierra or something, and use, use that way as a school building again. But, um, I think the opposition to it is, is that people don't wanna spend that much money on an old building, I think. I'm, I'm not totally certain on what, what the opposition is, but that, you know, the admin building might be better served at a rental, maybe downtown somewhere, or. Um, you know, a whole new building perhaps on the Winrec site. Um, but the school committee has really, um, advocated for this to happen for, for the Sandborne Carriage House to be used. And, yeah.
What's the price tag?
I think it's about six to eight million dollars. I, I, I'm sorry, I don't know all the, all the numbers, but it seems to me from talking to some EFPC people. Is that the alternative is almost as costly, but would be impermanent.
So six to eight, so less than, less than ten million.
Yeah, I don't know all the, all the numbers, I'm sorry.
And you had said that, um, if we don't do that, we have to rent space at rental cost that would approach that number?
There, there's just, A, like, where would we do it? Um, B, they've already sort of done a whole bunch of sort of feasibility studies on this, and they're, they're at the design phase. Um, you know, C, it wouldn't be using the existing. Um, resources that the school committee and the town has already, like, we have the buildings, we have the land.
But in terms of the money, like, how much would the rental be?
I'm sorry, I, I don't know that, but it, the, the argument that I've been hearing is that. Yes, these things might cost less than doing this building, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a long-term solution.
Right. And I mean, certainly it would be a nice benefit to have that historic building.
So what I understand is that the historical committee is going to, um. Uh, recommend favorable action, um, the Historical Society, which is house, which is leasing the Sandborne House from the town. Are going to be vocal about it, too. I think they are in support of it, um. And, yeah, it's, it's. I, I think that for us, the relevancies is, is preser- preserving historical resources and, um. Probably a more, um. Proper use of space and maintaining our, our resources. And even from the nuts and bolts of the finances, I think it sounds to me, from, from what I understand from the committee, um, is that. You know, long term, it is a better commitment of resources to something that's permanent.
So, so currently, the, the carriage house is unoccupied. And is there any idea of how much restoring it would take?
So it's a, it's a liability right now. It's actually in a really bad shape and taped off, and it's right by, um, an elementary school. So, right now they have liability to it. They still have maintenance cost, and there would be cost to it to, um. To dismantle it and to, to destroy it also.
Which, which of course we don't want, so.
Right.
So I think there's a, so the, so the question before the board then is, um. So there's historical preservation. I don't know that. I don't have enough information as to whether or not, what the. I don't have enough information as to whether or not, what the finances are, so I don't know that I could comment on that. I would certainly say, from my opinion, that. Um, preservation of the Sanborn House is a priority. That preserving it and using it. More than just, you know, because we have to do something where it's gonna fall down. It's better we do something and have it. Have, make, have it used by the town. So I think that, that's as far as I think I'm willing to go, just because the finances, there are. So many moving parts in the finances. I don't, I don't know that I could say more than that. So I don't know what the rest of you are comfortable with saying.
It, it, it's also tied with the timing of the school's projects, is, isn't it? I mean.
So Article twenty-six and Article twenty-seven are separate articles and if. It could be that Article twenty-six, you know, both and twenty-seven both pass or twenty-six. Doesn't pass and twenty-seven does. And they do have, you know, a Plan A, Plan B kind of a situation. So if Article twenty-six doesn't pass, say, and they don't, they don't start moving forward with the. Carriage house, what happens is Article twenty-seven then would, um. Be a more, they would have to procure funds to, to, I think what I heard was. Instead of eight trailers, they would have to get twelve so that all the, all the kids could, could be in, um. You know, moved out of Lynch properties they can work on. So it's still, they're still, you know, they, they can, they can do this. But Article twenty-seven only would be a more temporary solution, whereas Article twenty-six plus Article twenty-seven would, would then. Um, increase the asset that we have in the, in the Sanborn Carriage House. Um, and then sort of. Update, update some of, some of these properties that the town already has.
So, um. I don't, is there a, is there a, is there a motion to remove this? Is there a motion somewhere from the board on an endorsement of this?
Would I be able to make a motion like that?
Yeah, anyone can.
I, I would make a motion for favorable, um, action for Article twenty-six. Um, based on the, um. Preservation or, uh, of historic resources. Um, and a, um. What, what is the planning phrase for this? Like a, a use, um, uh, uh.
Adaptive reuse?
Adaptive reuse or, or, or.
Adaptive reuse.
Hmm, or favorable u- use of existing. Property or, or buildings.
Not to tear things down.
Yeah, yeah. Um, a sort of sustainable usage of.
Sustainable or? Okay, so we have preservation of historical resources. Adaptive reuse of an existing building. And a sustainable.
Well, it's, I don't know if it's more, it's more sustainable. To not throw away an entire building.
Yes, I agree. I'm more, I'm just wondering if there's a pat phrase, more sustainable to renovate than to, than to replace or to, to tear down.
That's wasteful.
Oh, yeah. More sustainable to renovate than replace. Or to, to, no, to remove. Well, removing is pretty sustainable. You take it all.
I mean, to the extent that we can build a case for. The opera, the, the costs of not doing it, I, I think that would bolster the case. Uh, you know, if we can get a, a good sense of the trailers and, um.
Well, yeah, unfortunately we won't get that and.
That's a little bit out of our wheelhouse, it feels like, but.
Yeah, sure, sure.
So I think we can say that without action. The carriage house. Will. Be demolished through neglect.
Right.
And so that is.
I wanted to make on this whole thing is the town purchased this property. And when they purchased it, there was implicit in that decision, a commitment to preservation. They haven't let the main house go to, um, demolition by neglect. And it, it's unfortunate that we're on the verge of having its, its associated structure go that route. And it would not be what was envisioned when the town originally bought the property.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
So I like the phrase you put in there, purchase the property with a commitment to, for preservation. So, um. Let me stitch some of these things together. So the motion might be this. Planning Board recommends favorable action. Based on the fact that without action, the carriage house will be demolished through neglect. And the town purchased the property with a commitment for preservation. That. Reusing this as the. Administration central offices will ensure the preservation of a historic resource. And an adaptive reuse of an existing building. How does that sound?
Yeah, I, I feel like there was missing a little bit of the historical resources, but maybe not. I'm, I'm not, I'm not totally processing everything that's said, but. If that part is said, just that it's, it's a pretty, um, pretty precious historic resource.
Could you pop up at a window, Brian?
Sorry, pop up what window?
No, a, a OneNote or something so you can type. Cause I, I think I've, I've stitched some words together and I. I think people. Or you can give me the screen, that's fine, I can do it.
Um, um, yeah. Uh, yeah, maybe that'll, hold on. Go for it.
Okay. Okay, you can see my screen?
We see your code.
Oding.
I know, I find a screen I can type in, so here we go. So the. Let me make it bigger so you can see it. Planning Board recommends favorable action. On Article twenty-six. Um, as without action, carriage house will be demolished. Through neglect. And the town purchased. Property with the commitment.
Do we know those two as facts?
Well, that was my question is, we don't know that to a fact. We understand that the town purchased the property with a commitment for preservation.
I think. Pretty.
I mean.
I think it would be more, um, uh. It, it would be easier to say that, um, you know, it's a historical resource that needs to be preserved or something like that. Rather than.
Right, we definitely say that. And then, and then the question is whether the town, when they bought it, cared about that. And you're right, we don't know that.
Yeah, you can safely say that it is a historic resource worthy of preservation.
Yeah, got it.
Okay, as the carriage house. Is a historical, historical resource worthy of preservation. May support the adaptive reuse of an existing town building. And note that. The existing state, the, the carriage house, we know that it's in a poor state. Is in poor condition. How is that? And why is this wrapping in such a strange way? It's very wrapping in a very strange way. Nope, that's not making it any better. Okay, sorry about that. That's what you get when you, uh, type in a program or you get it or. I'll just put in character turns here and everything will be fine.
I think that's simple enough, but like, in regards to its. Program to building. Use, you know, the best possible use of that, we, I don't, I don't know if we need to say anything about that. Or it's, um, financial, you know, uh, responsibility. Uh, of, you know, the best way of using town. Finances, but I, I think that we, we agree that that, that portion we can stay out of.
I would not be comfortable talking to that, yeah.
Okay. I think this is, I mean, fairly strong, just that, you know, the planning board really supports, um, preservation of historic resources in town.
Okay, uh, is there a motion to this, um? Someone can say so moved and we can move on.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, uh, Nick?
Aye.
Uh, Sally?
Aye, if you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you, uh, you check?
Aye.
Um, Kurt?
Aye.
And Debs's eye as well. Oh, I should read this into the record. The Planning Board recommends favorable action in Article twenty-six. As the carriage houses are a historical resource worthy of preservation, we support the adaptive reuse of an existing town building. And note that the carriage house is in poor condition and will require some action to prevent demolition through neglect. Okay, so that was Article twenty-six. And then.
Go, we go back to Article eight when.
We go back to Article eight, cause.
I can get, I can get that backup.
And I will stop sharing. Nancy, do you have that or should I send you a copy of that wording?
Oh, I caught it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so when we left off, uh, we were discussing whether the planning board should take a stand on this particular article. So we can very quickly go around, I think, and hopefully people can just say whether they believe we should take a stand or not.
Can I, can I ask a clarifying question, Deob?
Yeah, sure.
Um, so this question of, of, of voting rights is, um, not central to the mission of the planning board. Um, so my question is, would I just be speaking as? Um, a town voter?
Yeah, that's kinda how I feel. I, I mean, are we voting? Are, are we influencing the outcome by this? Um.
Yeah.
Uh.
Uh, yeah, so, so if we were to take a stance positive for or against, yes, we are. I don't know if our intent is to, our intent is to provide town meeting with a sense of where the board stands on this article. Whether the town meeting takes our opinion into account is their own decision.
I see.
Um. Uh, you know, it's. So if the, if the planning feels, yeah, so I think, go ahead, Sally, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, because it's not, it, it, you know, the planning board's charter and mission and purpose and charge. Um, is not, does not include this question of voting rights for adult residents. So if we do vote, we would have to say that the planning board members, um, voted, you know, four one or five oh or whatever it is. Um. To, in favor of this motion. And then if anyone says, well, what's the point of that? You guys don't have this in your jurisdiction. We would just say, we know, but we thought we'd chime in.
Well, Sally, I would say, um, reiterate what Deob said about. The master plan and like the, one of the major goals is to build community. For example, goal D two, it says expand community initiatives that increase cultural, ethnic, religious ability. And economic diversity and collaboration. And the responsible parties are planning department, planning board and town manager, a hundred percent.
Well, so that's a, that's a, that's an excellent, um, uh, point to make when we are saying that we support this article. Because we see as, as each thing so well pointed out.
What, what section is that?
Um, it's in the master plan and it's all D, which is to build community. And so in the, in those goals, there, there's, there's several sub-goals.
Okay.
Um. And. It's, it's interesting that we're the most responsible party for that.
Interesting, yeah.
I think we just got stuck with most everything in there.
We design a town.
Yeah. Yeah, my computer's so broken.
And I would say that this voting rights law is very much about, um, trying to increase. The. Diversity of voices in how the government is run and, and, and how it spends its money and.
Yeah, I think it also means that. Those, one of the things that struck me when I was. Holding up signs that, the just recent election was that. I was asking people whether or not they voted. And I was struck by how inappropriate that really should have been. The question I was asking, it should have been, you know. The concerns that affect you as a resident. Affect you regardless of your ability to vote. And I think that my, one of my concerns is that people who don't. Have the ability to vote, don't feel like they're part of our community in the extent they could be. They don't feel like they have the ability to raise their voice. And so. We are not reaching, we are not doing our job if they do not feel like they can come and talk to us. And I think there's a. Implicit bias against, or there's an implicit obstacle there. So.
Sorry, I, I may be like super naive. So, so what, what group? Of, you know. Adults living in Winchester are not currently eligible to vote?
Non-citizens.
Oh, that's, okay. Sorry, that was, I was.
Yeah.
Read between the lines there. Okay, that's what this is really stressing, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
But so this allows them to vote in town, town articles or town, town elections as well as be, um, candidates. In all townwide. Um, or is it just town meeting?
Um, I think that. It only says standing for town meetings. It does not say townwide.
Positions.
Positions. And I don't know if that's because there's a separate. State. I don't know enough about the legalities. To understand why that's not in here.
So I would make a motion to, um. How would I put it?
Endorse. Endorse.
Favorable action.
Yeah.
It's, it would be recommend, it would be recommend.
Favor action for Article eight.
And it would be. On Article A, based upon. What was that section of the master plan?
Um.
Master plan action.
Goal D of building community. Um, and specifically goal D two. To expand community initiatives that increase cultural, ethnic, religious ability and economic diversity and collaboration. I, I just sort of pulled that out. I didn't really go through all of them to see if.
I think that's good enough.
Yeah.
And go, and we can amend if, you know, so we can, we can, we can come in before town meeting and add to this endorsement if, if there's more. I think we lost Sally.
Her phone number is there.
I'm, I'm here. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah, so, so. Yeah, so, so we just had a motion from Yicheng to recommend favorable action on Article A based on. The master Winchester master plan action plan. Goal D, building communities specifically, goal D two?
I think also D one, but um, D one says establish robust and effective communication between residents and town government. The town government to increase community participation in town decisions with elevated awareness of town issues and initiatives.
Okay, so those were. Oh, Brian, could you flip back to that, because I was about to write down that. It was.
D one and D two?
No, keep going. Uh, no, okay, so this is not the action plan.
But it's, it's like D one and D two, and then the D one one is like sub-sub.
Well, it's weird. D one is robust communication.
Right, and then in my thing, it has, you know, like the, the major.
Oh, so, but you're reading from the action plan?
Oh, I am.
Yeah, because that is um. Okay, so here we go, there's goal D one, establish robust and effective communications. Increase community partition, so this is definitely goal D one, and I will just copy it from the action, so. We can just simply say goal D one of the action plan, and then specifically. Goal D and goal D two. Of the action plan, master plan, action plan. Okay, so. We recommend favorable action on Article H based on the master plan, action plan, goal D one. Building community and goal D two. Expand community initiatives and increase cultural, ethnic, religious ability and economic diversity and collaboration. Okay, that is the motion, is there a second?
I second it, I just, I'm, I'm chasing down exactly that we have, I mean, I'm sure you read it right, but I do second it.
Okay, so we have a first and a second, we'll do a roll call vote then, uh, Yicheng.
Hi.
Uh, Sally.
Hi.
Kurt.
Hi.
Uh, Nick.
Hi.
And Debs's eye as well, so thank you all, uh, we have slugged our way through. The uh, articles. And we were supposed to be talking about MBTA zoning an hour ago, I think we will put that off. We do have some minutes to approve, so.
Can I just ask you a question about Article twenty-three, I really apologize for my computer.
Okay, let's.
On Article twenty-three, it says vote to fix the salary and con- compensation of all elective officers of the town. Are we fixing it at zero? I don't understand that article.
Yeah, I guess we are, because we do not have elected officers who get paid. So for instance.
So why is the.
I think it's there just to. I don't know, it also includes talking about the capital and building stabilization funds, so.
Sorry, this is um. Sorry, what is this um? This is to raise inappropriate funds to defray the expense, uh, starting in July. It's not to fix as in um, to make it static, but to fix as in uh, the salary and compensation. For um. Sorry, uh, I'm not saying this right. Uh, but, but I, it's not fixed as in. Uh, it, it's fixed as in repair, not fix as in keep it static.
So I would, I would just want to say that I have no idea what it means, Sally, but I'm pretty sure that we don't have to worry about it at the moment.
I just, I wouldn't, as a town meeting member, wanna, I wanna hear, never mind, I'm sorry I brought it up.
No, no, hopefully we'll get something in our packet, which will tell us what this is.
There should be a background, there should be a background.
Yeah.
For that.
So I'm sorry, yeah, go on to what I had to do, I really apologize.
No problem, no problem, so we are, we are now at the point where I think we're going to do the minutes. And we'll do them backwards so that we can go into executive session and then leave, so. Our first set of minutes is from uh Tuesday, March twenty-second. Or no, I'm sorry, yeah, March fifteenth is our first set of. Ordinary minutes or standard minutes, or whatever we want to call them. So this is, uh, are there any uh comments on? March fifteenth.
Uh, just a question maybe for Nancy. Um, is, is, um, for some of these notes, they, they put the person to the comments. Um, even within this, this note, it sort of does that some places and some places do not. But then I've noticed that for the other minutes from previous weeks, that they do not, and I just wondered what, what um. What were the determinations for that?
Could you give an example, Yicheng?
Yes, so like on March fifteenth, say, um, in the PB deliberations. Um, you know, it says Mr. Scott, Miss Wolf, Miss Dale, um.
This is page two.
Right, page two, but then say for um. You know, uh. I think perhaps even for page three, that general center portion is sort of just notes. Without referencing to the person.
Okay, so like number, under number sixteen unbundled parking, there's an indication of which person.
Yeah.
Made those comments.
Just curious, what, what? Why do that in some places and not the others?
So usually what I do is if it's the deliberations. Um, and you're called on specifically to do a round robin of comments. Um, for the public hearing, those I would identify individual comments. Whereas if it's more of a general question or comment, and there's a lot of input coming from different directions. I often just put it all together and don't identify, you're not doing the round robin at that point. You're doing just, you're all discussing together um, comments about a specific subject.
Okay.
That makes sense?
I think so, yeah.
Yep, it does to me too.
Okay, Yicheng, was that your?
Um, I think, um, right now, yes, I have a couple of, um, maybe, because it's such a big meeting. Um, and I didn't really. Um, I'll, I'll let Sally speak first.
So I, these are very minor, but on page one, under number one, Chair Darius. Fair Jarius, I'm sorry, if you could just say sustainability director comma Ken Pruitt. And then also, um, that Ken Pruitt's name is spelled with two Ts. And it occurs in, I don't know, three or four places in the document, maybe more, you can do a word search on that. And then in the others attending, in the third column towards the bottom, Xena. Spelled her name Z E I N A, if I'm not sure, if I'm not mistaken, um, and then. Then I had a question on page two, if you want me to do that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, in page two, on page two, under number six impacts, under Chair Jarius. There is a sentence that says this project is no worse. Um, and I didn't understand that, Deob, but.
I, what I said would be the view of the pond. Is not, the, the impact on the view of the pond is no worse than by a byright project. Because the building width could be just as wide for the byright project.
But, okay, as long as everybody knows that, it just, just jumped out at me. And, and then on page three, Mr. Zakali noted two changes to the list of mitigating conditions. Conditions from what was included in the um, meeting package. It's just what we call it.
Oh, I see. It's called agenda packet, and it should be the meeting packet.
Whether edits and that, so we should go back to the other.
Okay, um, Yicheng, did you have any, do you recall your edits on this?
Um, just sort of at the end, when we started, um, when we were discussing the final vote. I, I'd be curious why Miss Wolf's comments weren't included, but um, so page, end of page three. Um, and top of page four, I remember her saying a whole bunch of stuff, but it wasn't in there. Um.
Yeah, she had prepared remarks, I believe.
Yeah, she did have prepared remarks, thank you for remembering that. I know she showed them in two different places, one was at the end of the meeting, one was there, so. We should include those.
Were her prepared remarks in the pack?
She, no, she presented them, she had, she presented. Images and she spoke to them, so in that sense, they were prepared as in she, but I don't know if they were in the packet.
Oh, I can go back and edit uh through the.
They were not, they were not in the packet. When I prepared remarks, meaning when she came, yeah, she had this PowerPoint, uh, but that was only known at the time of the meeting, we didn't, she didn't. Say she was giving us any documents or anything.
Okay, um.
That was one thing, and then for, for my comments on, on top of page four, I thought I had um, a couple more points, but maybe I'm, I'm mistaken, I just. Remember talking about what?
Go ahead, yeah, go.
Oh, I, I remember talking about it being, um, I think transit oriented development that, that. Um, the town had wanted for their twenty fifteen zoning. Um, and I, I think I commented that it was, it was a good design that we should um, recognize it.
So if I can make the suggestion that we um, ask Nancy to review the meeting for that section. And to add any missing comments that were made prior to the vote.
I think that would be very important, because it, it's sort of the summary of what we read.
And then we can bring this back after she does that, we'll bring it back to the board for further review. And I don't think we have to vote on that, but if we just, if that's acceptable, we can just. I guess it's acceptable.
Yes.
Acceptable to me, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, so let us um, move on then to Tuesday, March twenty-second. Are there any comments on those minutes?
I had a question.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
You can hear me? It says my, it says I'm muted, okay, I'm glad you can hear me. In number one, under updates, Mr. Zakali, it's the fourth bu- fourth line up from the bottom of that section one. It says, so these guidelines are coming from Massachusetts Department of Housing, with the intent of increasing density around bus and rail stations. Not, oh, not bus stops. Oh, and that actually answers the question I had earlier, so you're saying that this law doesn't recognize bus stops. As an MBTA resource or property.
It's not a station, yeah, so it's very specifically.
Yeah, it's all about a half a mile within a station.
Cause like there's five bus stops on North Main Street, and you know, that, in a one mile street. That means that you're only two tenths of a mile from a bus stop, anywhere you build on North Main. That's good, that's, that would be something worth bringing up in the um, um, editing sections. Sessions, Brian.
Uh, yeah, it is talked about specifically in the GBD two and three, because it's a long a bus route, so. That's why I say it makes, it makes sense, that even though it's a half a mile away from the train station, it's actually a longer bus route, which is where you want to. Concentrate any density anyway.
Right. And then I didn't have any other comments after that, I just didn't understand what that was, and then I suddenly understood it and I like it. Not that you said it, but it happens to be what they want.
It's short sighted, that's what part of the memo was, was contemplating.
Okay.
Maybe it's just, maybe it's just comma lowercase not. That would do it.
Okay.
Nancy.
Sure.
Okay, that's all I had on.
That's all you got, any other comments on March twenty?